Welcome to the April meeting of the Calgary Police Commission. I would like to call this meeting to order and ask that everyone ensure that their microphones are muted until you need to speak. My name is Sean Cornet and I am the Chair of the Commission. Present from the Commissioner, Commissioners, until Siddiqui, Marilyn North Pagan, Susan Mallon, Kim Lynch Proctor, Heather Campbell, Theresa Rossell, Pam Carnick, TJ Sang, Jeff French, and Counselor Courtney Walcott. The Calgary Police Service representatives are led by Chief Constable Mark Newfeld. Chief, would you please introduce those you expect to speak during today's meeting?
Thank you, Chair. Superintendent Joe Varr, Executive Officer, I will introduce the speakers that are online are Director Phil Hecker and Staff Sergeant Danny Leong, delivering a cybercrime presentation later on. And the rest of the speakers are here in the room, myself, and I'll introduce them as we go around. Director Michael Dunn, Manager Leslie McRae, Business Strategist Pamela Bank, Deputy Chief Chad Topic, myself, Chief Mark Newfeld, Executive Director Brett Dyer, Deputy Chief Roger Gill, Acting Superintendent Bruce Walker, Director Tricia Sveadman, Sergeant Cyril Pratt, and Staff Sergeant Josh Kate, and we are just waiting for Acting General Counsel Mr. Bob Bennett.
Great. Thank you very much, and thank you to everyone for being here today. For those who are not familiar with our role, the Calgary Police Commission is a body of community members appointed by City Council to provide independent citizen governance and oversight of the Calgary Police Service on behalf of all Calgarians. To protect the political neutrality of the police, Alberta's Police Act requires that the police chief report directly to us and that we give direction to the service through the chief, police policies, monitoring of the complaint process, and approval of how the police budget is spent. Today is one of eight public meetings we have each year to openly discuss police governance and oversight matters with the service's leadership and to hear from the public. In addition to these meetings, there are also private monthly committee meetings where commissioners dedicate time to work more directly with the various service members on matters that cannot be discussed publicly. To open our meeting, I would like to acknowledge that this call is taking place on the traditional territory of the Nitsapie, made up of the Singziga, Bogani, and Kainai First Nations. The Yarahe Nakota First Nations comprised of the Chiniki, Berispa, and Wesley First Nations, and the Tzina First Nation. These are the people who made a treaty with the Crown, forming Treaty VII Territory. The city of Calgary is also homeland to the historic Northwest Métis and to Métis Nation of Alberta, Region III. We are committed to doing our part to address the inequity and intergenerational trauma caused by past and current wrongs to support reconciliation with all Indigenous people in our community. The Calgary Police Commission also condemns racism and prejudice in all forms and is committed to being anti-racist. We stand in solidarity with our colleagues, families, and citizens who are Black, Indigenous, or other people of color. For those joining us for the first time, allow me to provide a brief overview of the meeting format. The public session of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on our website so we can make it available to those unable to attend. There will be several presentations from the Calgary Police Service, Commission members, and Commission staff. Commissioners will then have the chance to ask questions or make comments by raising their hands in Zoom. Once we have completed the presentations, we will move to the public participation portion of the meeting. Anyone who has registered to speak before noon today will then be called on by name and will have a chance to either ask a question or make a presentation for our consideration. Following the public participation session, we will close the public portion of the meeting and ask the media and chief to remain on the line with me for a brief media availability. To start our agenda items, I will now call for declarations of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest from the Commissioners. Hearing no declarations, I will now ask for approval of the agenda. Does any member of the Commission wish to request an amendment to the agenda? Hearing none, I will now ask for approval of the consent agenda. For those viewing today's meeting, the consent agenda is a list of routine items that Commissioners agree can be accepted without more discussions or a separate vote. Does any member of the Commission wish to request an item on the consent agenda be brought forward for further discussion? Hearing no such request, I declare both the agenda and the consent agenda approved as presented. I'll now make my report as the Chair. This has been an extremely busy month for both the Commission and the service, and there are a lot of things for me to report. The issue that is likely top of mind for most is the decision made by the Commission to direct that the Thin Blue Line be replaced with something that better reflects the values of all Calgarians. I want to start by saying this decision was not an expression of non-confidence in the members of the Calgary Police Service. The Commission and the community value those who serve and strongly support the desire to visually honor fallen officers and recognize the sacrifices made by those who serve and their families. Calgarians and the Commission are grateful for the outstanding work the sworn and civilian members of the service do every day to keep us safe. As I said to the media yesterday afternoon, this conversation in Calgary has never been a question of whether police officers are wearing the symbol with good intentions or to express positive things. It was a decision we unanimously made because the symbols meeting is mixed and is seen differently by a significant number of people in our city. This conversation has also not been happening in isolation. Thin Blue Line patches have already been ordered off the uniforms of officers in Edmonton, Victoria, Ottawa, Toronto, St. John, and the RCMP. Other cities like Saskatoon are in the process of considering what to do with this issue. As our conversations as a Commission have also not been rushed, neither the leadership of the service nor the police associations were surprised by the Commission's decision. We made it clear last fall after considering the information submitted by the service that we were not supportive of the Thin Blue Line patch being permitted on police uniforms. While the Commission's direction on the Thin Blue Line patch has not changed, we understand that implementing it will take some time. Effective anti-racism work and culture change requires dialogue and building buy-in. There is a lot of understandable emotion on both sides of Thin Blue Line patch discussion, and we support the chief taking a couple of weeks to work through the decision with members. I also want to say that it's not lost on the Commission that a lawful direction is being ignored by officers. The Calgary Police Commission is an extension of Calgary's elected government, empowered by the province's elected government to provide governance and oversight of the police on behalf of Calgarians. It's concerning that Calgary Police Officers consider it acceptable to ignore lawful direction they personally disagree with, but it is even more concerning that senior officers in the organization are encouraging and participating in this behavior. While we understand there are strong feelings all around this issue and we want as much as possible to avoid compliance through enforcement, citizen oversight of the police is foundational to modern democracies. There will have to be accountability for undermining the lawful chain of command if this continues. But we also understand clearly from members that the tension around Thin Blue Line patch decision is about so much more than just the patch. We have heard that you feel unsupported, unvalued, and attacked. We have also heard that there is a need for better communication engagement between you and the Commission. We commit to you that we will immediately start working on rebuilding the trust between you and our Commission as Calgarians. We're relying on us to work together to ensure our community is safe. Finally, I want to say again that this issue is important, but it's far from the only important policing issue in our city. Our Commission is committed to seeing this decision through, but we are also focused on dealing with severe staffing shortages on the frontline, ensuring safety in Calgary's transforming downtown and moving forward with the many needed reforms and improvements underway at the Calgary Police Service. Since our last regular meeting, the service has brought people to justice for armed carjackings of delivery trucks, attempted murder during a road rage incident, and a string of robberies and sexual assaults. Investigators have also been working hard to bring charges in a random attack in a park and a hate crime at a church. In response to concerns from the community, the service adjusted their response to weekly protests in the Beltline to better manage and an unprecedented situation that presented countless legal and logistical challenges. Policing protests is a challenging enough at normal times, but the job is even harder at this time of high emotion and division. Thank you to everyone who has been involved in giving Beltline residents their weekends back. Shockingly, our city has also seen six homicides and suspicious deaths in March and April, including random attacks. These cases are heartbreaking, worrying, and make us angry. While it does not bring anyone's loved ones back, we take some comfort in knowing that the service dedicates countless hours and resources to finding those responsible and bringing them to justice. These are just a few of the thousands of calls that officers responded to this month to help keep our community safe. While we were working through some deep divides right now, we must not lose sight of the outstanding work done by the men and women in uniform. The service has also continued their work on reconciliation. I was honored to attend an eagle feather transfer ceremony where local elders transferred a feather to the service that can be used to swear oaths. Integrating Indigenous practices into the service under the guidance and supervision of elders is one of the many ways we are seeking reconciliation. The service also launched a training course for all members to learn about ways and worldview of local Indigenous peoples. This course also covers our shared history of Treaty VII, residential schools, the Sixtyth Scoop, and intergenerational trauma. We are proud of the service for all the work being done to build understanding between officers and communities that they serve and believe this is also an important step towards reconciliation. On behalf of the Commission and all Calgarians, thank you to everyone who has worked so hard on these cases and initiatives. Our Commission is committed to working with you to ensure we are tackling the big public safety issues facing Calgary together so that we can all enjoy a safe and inclusive city. With that, I conclude my Chair's report. We will now move on to the first formal presentation of today's meeting. The service will be sharing with the Commission a public bit about its approach to cybercrime investigations. So I will turn it over to the Chief and please take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks so much. I'm going to turn it over for the presentation to Superintendent Ryan Ailiff, who I believe is online, and he's going to go ahead and introduce a presentation and case study on Operation Gold Dust.
Thank you, Chief, and good afternoon, everybody. Our little team here in our cyber boardroom would like to talk to you about Operation Gold Dust. We're incredibly proud of what our members did to help resolve Operation Gold Dust. They played a critical role in dismantling a large international ransomware file. To give you some perspective on how amazing I think our team was in this, there was eighteen national agencies involved and only one municipal agency. That municipal agency was the Calgary Police Service, and we did play a major role in this resolution. Sergeant Danny Leong is going to lead you through the presentation today, and I'm hoping that you guys, as he's going through it, can note the key or the critical importance corporate partnerships played and the timely way they played the important roles they did in the resolution of this investigation, because that's the future that that we foresee here in Calgary as we continue to evolve with our subprogram. So with that, Sergeant Leong, over to you.
Thanks, Superintendent. Are you able to see the screen? Perfect, thank you. Um, so Operation Gold Dust was a two-year operation, spearheaded by the CPS Cybercrime Team. We were the primary Canadian lead on an eighteen-member international investigation. Just so, just to kind of bring everybody up to speed in terms of what REVO or Sonya Kiwi ransomware was, they were by far one of the most notorious and well-known ransomware groups in the world. You know, as some of you may or may not know, ransomware, you know, at its bare essence is an extortion where a ransomware group will infiltrate your network and your systems, steal or encrypt your data, and in exchange for the release and decryption of that data, request funds usually in Bitcoin. Sonya Kiwi and, you know, or REVO, subscribe to what, you know, many of you may know as ransomware as a service. So as to speak, what that was is they were, you know, a general contractor. They would have affiliates that would be responsible for breaching networks. They would have another set of affiliates that would be responsible for deploying malware, and then they would even have another group of affiliates that would be responsible for negotiating the ransom with the victims. You know, make no mistake, these are very, very sophisticated operations with a worldwide reach. You know, and, you know, for the vast majority of our victims and their corporations, this is probably going to be one of their worst days in their company. The impact, the impact of Sonya Kiwi, you know, made headlines across the world. You guys are probably familiar with the JBS meatpacking plant. The Grooman, Groomonshire, Mysalas, and Saks law firm were targeted as well. You may recall, they were responsible for the leak of, you know, celebrity information, including the former US President Donald Trump. Quantum Computer was a significant breach as they were a major supply chain for Apple and Lenovo. But the list goes on. Again, just kind of reinforcing the impact that they had, you know, on the world. A brief Canadian overview, you know, we can estimate that there's probably, you know, upwards of six hundred ransomware incidents, you know, over the Canadian landscape. We can identify approximately thirty-five associated to Sonya Kiwi. But take this data with a grain of salt. Ransomware is notoriously under-reported. It's an extremely difficult defense to measure as the vast majority of our victims don't report. The unreported rate, some reports say, are as high as eighty percent. So again, for a multitude of reasons, you know, whether victims or companies choose to come forward and report to law enforcement can vary. Again, just a further update, you know, the Canadian perspective, some significant numbers in terms of what the ransom is being requested. Now, as far as CPS's involvement and how we got involved in this investigation, there are several companies within Calgary that fell victim to the REVO Sonya Kiwi organization. The CPS Cybercrime Team began its investigation, and we're very lucky to have some very skilled members of our team who were able to be considered subject matter experts in Canadian law enforcement on ransomware. While we were starting our investigations here, Europol was starting to assemble an operation. We had learned that French and Romanian authorities had discovered through analysis of their servers that in fact, one of the main communication servers for Sonya Kiwi was in fact housed in Canada, in Quebec. Superintendent Ailiff had mentioned the vast majority of the, you know, the organizations involved were federal agencies. We were involved because, you know, the RCMP essentially identified CPS Cyber Crimes Team as the subject matter experts in this and in fact, requested that, you know, we be involved. So we headed to Europol to attend several meetings and play a role in the operation. One of the big takes from this is not only the International Law Enforcement Corporation, but as you can see from there, the public-private partnerships that were involved in this were quite significant. McAfee and Bitdefender had an equal stake at the table in this, and that along with the international reach of law enforcement really was able to make a significant impact. McAfee, Bitdefender, or any corporations on their own were not able to, you know, come to a resolution with this, and neither was law enforcement, but coming together, we're able to pool our resources and our skill sets to resolve this organization. So CPS investigation began as we were named the Canadian lead. We wrote several judicial authorizations to the communication server in Quebec. From that, we were able to gather data, network data that was, I believe, yes, analyzed by the German authorities. Again, verifying with that information, so the information that we're able to gather from the servers in Quebec played a huge part in being able to identify the offenders and the members of the Sonya Kiwi group. We continue to write several judicial authorizations to get, to obtain covert access to the server. Again, further allowing us to identify where the affiliates were housed across the world. And to summarize, you know, the success of the operation accumulated in over a dozen arrests worldwide in Kuwait, South Korea, as well as a significant portion of the Sonya Kiwi group arrested in Russia. Since we've been able to dismantle, we continue to analyze the information, we continue to analyze the data. But since then, Sonya Kiwi has not returned or rebranded, which has been unusual. So we've been able to, you know, successfully dismantle probably one of the world's most notorious ransomware groups.
Thanks, Sergeant Leong. With that, we open for any questions.
Are there any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner North Pagan, please go ahead.
Yeah, this is actually very interesting. This is early on in my career before, but what you said that CPS actually led the way with this investigation, I'm just curious to know as to what CPS does that's leading the field as opposed to what everybody else is doing and what they're, what they're learning from CPS.
Thanks, Commissioner. I was fortunate to come in, sorry, it's Inspector Phil Hecker speaking here. I was fortunate to come into the, to this area just a couple of years ago and to see the history that's been laid in developing the Cyber Crimes Team and Cyber Forensics Unit within the Calgary Police Service. I think there's a number of things that we're doing that are leading the way. One of the huge ones is just a really great foundation that was laid years ago. The other huge one is just going to be our employees. There's a good number of experts within there that are motivated and passionate about, about the field that you can't get them to talk about hockey on their lunch breaks. They talk about cybercrimes. And then as Sergeant Leong just mentioned too, the partnerships that we have, you know, whether it's within Canada, around the world, and within Calgary with a number of different, both public and private agencies. So we work with Sutina a fair bit on, you know, some of the questions that they have around cybercrimes and a number of different agencies. So I think those would be the kind of the three things, the partnerships, the employees, and just the groundwork that's been laid for quite a long time.
Sounds like a scary lunch hour. Thank you for the information.
Thanks very much. Commissioner Ting.
Thank you, Chair. My question is about officers working on this project. So financial crime of cybercrime, this is really a hot topic right now where the demand for talent is very, very high, and how does CPIs provide an environment where officers incentivize to like rather kind of go to private sector but rather gather together to learn something and join this group?
I think one of the biggest things is that we have the support of our executive, our Cyber Crimes Team, and is one of the longest in existence in Canadian law enforcement. So we've, we've been together for, in existence for just over eleven years, which doesn't seem like a lot, but compared to other agencies, because we've had the support of execs, we've been able to really develop our members and our teams and our skill sets. So yes, it's a highly competitive field. It is ever-changing, but we're extremely lucky to have, have great people who are motivated, you know, to their learning and, you know, the citizens of Calgary. To give you an example of that, Commissioner, we were one of six agencies that received a single invite to have one of our members trained at the Hague. We were the only Canadian agency selected. It was for crypto training, cryptocurrency tracing. And so we were supported here internally to send that member on short notice. We were the only Canadian, that member was the only Canadian present, and that training was critical to not only the investigation into Gold Dust, but current investigations that we're doing now.
Thanks. That's the Chair.
Thanks very much. Just curious, just to me feel, how many people are on the cybersecurity team? Roughly.
Well, right now, we're not up to full capacity, so authorized strength versus actual strength are two different things. I would say we're currently at over half capacity, down to one team from two as a result of just one of the same pressures the rest of the organization is facing. That's further compounded by other realities of staffing policing in a major city right now. So we're working through some of those things. One of the things I mentioned at the beginning of the, of the presentation was that's always going to be an issue for us here, and similar to the questions from Commissioner Zhang was, how do we continue to keep pace? The only way we can do that, and the only way we see success in balancing our officers doing these investigations and keeping pace with the pace of crime, also at the speed of business, because criminals always have the best computers and the most up-to-date technologies, is those private public partnerships with supportive community partners here in Calgary and other major corporations around Canada and the world. So those are things we're exploring right now, and that's something that I know for a fact, just in discussions you've been having recently. We're one of the very few agencies that are willing to do that and it's exciting stuff in the future.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Walcott.
No, I appreciate that, Chair, and honestly, so many of my questions were asked and answered. So this is kind of a slight extension question because I have similar questions to Commissioner Zhang, similar questions to Marilyn, Commissioner North Pagan. This, this type of work, my, my very, very naive assumption is that most police forces at a very, very high level do not have the capacity to do this, and this is a very powerful and unique aspect of the Calgary Police Service that, that, that obviously makes us stand out, given the fact that we were one of the only, that we were the lead agency chosen, and that's something to be proud of, but so my question becomes then, That we were the the lead agency chosen, then that's something to be proud of. But so my question becomes then. Is, you know, with this work. Growing in demand due to likely the continual increases in 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 cybercrime. I guess my question is really about the long-term strategic direction is that. Is this a is this the type of division that we are having conversations about? Creating creating a Calgary Police Service as a specialty. Within our within the organization, and I know that might actually circle back to the ELT room there. But very, very curious to know if with the success of this this project and the international recognition, if this is kind of part of that. Strategic direction for the CPS to specialize in that will be able to further balance our pretty unique talents here.
Thank you for the question. The answer, I guess, the surest answer is yes, this is something that's firmly. Anchored in our future and something we're aiming towards to continue to be. You know, not only not only leaders here in our community, but we want to lead nationally. And the only way we can do that is to continue to. To take bold steps to the spaces where not a lot of other agencies are. And that's not that those are unmeasured things. So. To give you an example of what I'm talking about, you talked about capacity at the beginning. So. We have Goldust, it's an investigation that allowed us to. To showcase one slim capacity in that cyber investigative space. There's many different areas in cyber that we have to be paying attention to so that that we can protect Calgarians. And we protect Calgarians, we're protecting all Canadians at large and other, you know, peoples, people in international communities because cyber really doesn't have any borders. But then there's the piece of it where what kind of capacity do we have here that's built into. To Calgary proper to keep our officers safe when they do our jobs. That allow us to share information with small businesses or medium-sized businesses here in Calgary to keep themselves safe. So that that in itself is forming the basis of what would be. A refresh to our cyber strategy. We had one come out in about 2014, and if I'm wrong in that date, these gentlemen will correct me. And that strategy was really sort of to set us on. On the path that we are now and get us to where we're at now. It talked about community partnerships. It talked about building. You know, just a general plan to get ourselves set. So we have that plan. We have a good idea of what the landscape looks like. We are firmly. Recognized in Canada as industry leaders and we're very proud of that. So I think to answer your question is we just have to keep pushing. And we have to keep involving our partners here in Calgary. Like this is not a police issue. This is this is a community issue. So if you could imagine some of the best tools we have to solve these crimes. They exist in the in in the skill sets of people that sit in other corporations. They don't sit within our within our service right now. And so those partnerships, when we need people to step up. In our community, we're getting a lot of help behind the scenes from. From businesses and and other corporations or or public entities to help us solve crime.
No, that makes it it makes a lot of sense, especially when you think about it in the really the kid that you described, the community landscape. And how it's a community problem first and foremost. With just a quick follow-up question, with the 2014 strategy. Obviously, with the speed of change that comes along with with anything cyber related. Is that strategy? Have a particular timeframe attached to it? Like, you know, I just know that a lot of strategies end up having ten years or refresh periods. Most importantly, the reason I ask is is in particular is as we look to expand this kind of work in the capacity. If that strategy is being refreshed in and around the the budget cycles would be essentially where where my thought is going.
The original cyber strategy didn't have, it wasn't encased within a a four-year business cycle. It was something as a startup, and at that time it was the right strategy for this organization because we didn't know what we didn't know. We needed, we we had to, we had to just take a step into this arena. Now that we have a pretty good understanding of. Of the landscape and and we're involved in in a lot of different groups and committees that give us a good understanding where we should be to stay ahead of. You know, the curve the best we can in policing. We we are now tailoring our strategy to better align with. You know. Training asks, budgetary asks for for equipment. We're. Doing some really cool stuff that I I think we could probably bring back to you with respect to things that no other just in Canada is doing on. I guess we'd say experiments with. With things that allow us and our people to get better and have a more comfortable knowledge. Of all the things that the criminal element has that comfortable knowledge in. But to circle back to to the beginning of the conversation. We're down to one team from two to support. Our frontline officers in other parts of the organization and keeping a balance on and everything we have in the organization. So. A lot of the holes we want to fill, I think we're going to have to fill in different areas we haven't traditionally. And so that's something we can talk about at a later time, too.
Honestly, yeah, amazing. And I think it makes it makes sense. I think as the the program expands. You know, like you described, responding to the particular needs of the that that unique time. And. I'd be interested in looking forward to how we create some. Permanence and expansion of around the cyber cybercrime in the future. To honestly, like we described earlier, like you described earlier, to ensure that. This work is it stays cutting edge, right? So that we stay in front of it. I really appreciate the presentation. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Walcott. Commissioner Campbell.
Thanks very much, Chair. I'm always a little bit scared to ask a question with respect to. Cybercrime or cybersecurity and privacy with Commissioner Zhang on the line, considering that he is the. Prestigious expert internationally in this regard with who is technically Dr. Zhang with a PhD in computer science. So. I I hold forth there, but thinking about the the messaging that was provided in the presentation around. Ransomware as a service and the payment for that ransomware for for release. But I guess it was, it's kind of like a hostage taking. A a computer hostage shaking is in cryptocurrency. And Alberta right now as a province and through their through a provincial strategy is trying to actually attract crypto companies. To Alberta as as both an industry for tech for technical workers, et cetera. So I'm thinking about the balance between the invitation to cryptocurrency companies. And the incremental need for cybercrime support, technical expertise and. Skill from Calgary Police Service, which is again internationally recognized and Bravo for that. But how do we balance that so that A makes sense with B?
Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate the question. And as we've kind of alluded to, we could call it keep you here all night, but I know there's many other things. On the go, but one of the partnerships we spoke of is cryptocurrency organizations, whether it's, you know, vendors or whatever. Huge majority are. You know, legitimate Canadian businesses that obey judicial authorizations. They're happy to work with law enforcement. So we do see a fair bit of success there, making sure that that our team is trained in cryptocurrency as well as. You know, a little bit of everything, right? Ransomware, dark web, kind of open source, sort of like social media platforms. So we're trying to. Stay on that curve or ahead of that curve as much as possible, but completely appreciate your comment. We. We need to stay at the forefront of that as best as we can. Partnerships for sure are going to be the way to do it.
We, and you know, if I was to ask, we want these big crypto agencies to. We want these agencies to be in Calgary. We want to work to make them feel awesome when they come here. We, at this point, I would say we're very confident that we could support any major crypto organizations that want to come to Calgary. And I I think this is the best city for that right now. I know I'm. Biased as the superintendent of. The area that has cyber, but I've seen this firsthand. And I know that there's some things if. I know we don't like to add things out of hawk, but I'm sure that we could certainly stick around for questions enclosed that could give you a little more. Context to what I'm saying without talking about them, you know, here in a public setting. But I'm very confident that that we can support that type of Alberta growth, particularly here in Calgary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lynch Proctor.
Thanks, Chair. Congratulations on the outcome here. This certainly puts CPS on the map in terms of a leader in this area. Which is terrific. I my question was, and I completely agree with you, this is a community issue and it's very topical in. Top of mind in every boardroom across the country. I was wondering if you could expand on the under-reporting rate of 80%? And what do you think is driving that? Is it? Is it in part lack of detection or is it intentional non-reporting?
You know, a lot of it. So when a company or corporation is victimized by ransomware, there's a lot of factors that come into play. You know, we have to understand that the primary response for most corporations is remediation. They need to resolve the incident, get their operations back in line. As opposed to law enforcement where our priority in cybercrimes is attribution. We want to catch the bad guys. So when the corporations, you know, to be quite honest. Depending on how they're structured, their incident response plan may not even include notifying law enforcement. Until the incident has has, you know, been resolved. So you know, there's a plethora of reasons that are very legitimate as to why somebody wouldn't report. Reputational harm, shareholder sentiment. You know, their legal team may be advising against it, insurance policies. There's all sorts of things that can come into play. So it's not that corporations don't want to report to the police. They have other priorities that are ahead of that reporting structure.
If I may just briefly add, Commissioner, the so next month we're presenting to a group of chief information officers across Canada. Couple months ago, we presented to the Canadian Bankers Association. We've also done the same with a consortium of oil and gas companies as well. And so. These are the discussions we want to have. Before the incidents occur so that we've got the contacts, so that they've got some comfort in how they can report to us. That makes their, you know, executive and legal teams comfortable. So do as much of that kind of building beforehand as possible to kind of help improve that.
Thanks for those answers. I appreciate that. And and as somebody who sits in those boardrooms, glad to hear that you're reaching out and informing those partnerships. I think that's going to be a benefit to everyone.
Thank you very much and thank you for that. Thank you. Thank you in so many ways for both the presentation, but congratulations on on the resolving that particular issue. And for the whole service and your teams for continuing to ensure that. You've got that group of people there and you're doing the training and carrying on. You know, I know you're down down in staff, but I think it's a lot of work and it takes a lot of persistence and. Thank you very much for all of that. It's it's important work that's being done. So very good to hear about it. Much appreciated. With that, we will move on. We have three regular reports on the agenda. We'll hear all three of these reports before we go to questions from commissioners. So the first of those three reports, 5.2 is an update on the first one. Is, I believe, pandemic impacts, the update on that.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Pandemic impacts. Well, I'm going to start with Deputy Chief Tropic on the operational side, and then he's going to pass to Deputy G. To speak about the interim.
Thanks, Chief, and thanks, Chair. The CPS continues to monitor and respond to the impacts of the pandemic from an operational perspective. Some of the highlights that we've noticed over the last month and trends. Get into the crime pieces and then get into the protest activity. I'll cover off the crime a bit more in the prime report, but social disorder for February and March has trended in line with the five-year average. So it's returning to what we've seen in the past. That disorder in crime specific to the LRT lines has been a continued area of concern and focus for us and for Calgary Transit. To that end, we've continued with efforts with Calgary Transit to partner with them on their safety for all 2.0 initiative. Some of the crime trends that we've seen that have been reduced over the pandemic have continued with a slight return to the average zones. That includes break and enters, both residential and commercial. And theft of auto and also car problems. So we're starting to see a bit of a return to that, likely with more activity with reduced restrictions, et cetera. As reported previously, the reported domestic violence has shown a continued reduction. However, domestic reporting. Pre-violence continues to be increased as compared to the five-year average. Getting into the protest activity over the last month, of course, everyone's aware of everything that's been happening with the lifting of restrictions of public health orders. Concerns with the community impact of the ongoing repeated protests and marches resulted in mobilization of other protest groups and within the Beltline. As everyone knows, that resulted in the two weekends of conflict that increased the tensions. Between the groups and due to the lack of cooperation, the police direction that we saw. The city pursued an injunction which we were involved with both the submission of of information toward and then the subsequent execution of that. Over the month as well, the CPS engaged with business and community stakeholders in the Beltline area with the town hall. That was on March 15. And it involved our CPS major events and emergency management section, our District One leadership. The Community Resource Officers and other partners, including Calgary City of Calgary Community Standards. Calgary Neighborhoods and Alberta Health Services. Externally, it included the Beltline Neighborhood Association, Beltline Business Improvement Area and the 17th Avenue Business Improvement Area. Of course, we had the presentations to the Calgary Police Commission on March 18. To outline our subsequent plans for the protests over the weekend. And given the injunction, a change of game plan on how we would address those. The subsequent planning was put into motion on those two weekends, the last prior two weekends. Which included enforcement of the Court of Queen's Bench injunction that was obtained on the 18th of March. And that was very specific, as you know, to the ongoing protests and to ensure that the community was kept safe. Those plans on March 19th and March 26th went ahead. We activated our tactical operations center. On March 19th, we had six individuals arrested due to violations of the injunction and/or outstanding warrants. There was additional enforcement conducted by our traffic area and partnership with Bylaw. On March 26th, there were an additional two individuals arrested, one with due to warrants and the other due to violation of the injunction. The combined efforts of CPS with our partners and stakeholders were able to address those protests and keep them from marching and. Creating further public safety concerns. I I have to give those to all of the units involved. That was a very large operation on both subsequent weekends. For their efforts in addressing that, and we've seen continued compliance. Increasing compliance over the subsequent weekend with most recent being last weekend. At a strategic strategic level, we continue to participate and collaborate with our other stakeholders as part of the provincial Alberta Enforcement Framework for Repeat Offenders Operational Group. So that group is transitioning to look at how we can work together as partners to address other issues outside of the pandemic with meetings proceeding in April. That's what'll be next week. So I'll leave that part there and I'll turn it over to Deputy Hill.
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. As previously reported to the commission, the Calgary Police Service and the people of Bureau and Organizational Development have undertaken significant initiatives. As outlined in the annual policing plan to modernize human resources, advance training improvements and support member health and wellness. Over the past few years, the pandemic has brought challenges to all those areas. Despite these challenges, the service has pivoted resources and remained agile. To ensure progress on initiatives and address COVID-19 policies, health restrictions and related issues. Since the last update we provided in February, changes to the Public Health Act and the easing of restrictions have required the service. To again refocus resources to develop a safe return to the workplace plan. CPS continues to collaborate and align with our city partners as we move forward on that plan. I just want to quickly cover four areas in terms of our pandemic recovery plan versus the provincial health restrictions, as I mentioned. Given the changes in the restrictions, our team has developed a return to the office. Plan for members who have been working remotely for the past almost two years. This plan, this plan includes a safe return to the office with protocols in place to minimize risk. And sorry, to minimize risk to employees and members of the public. We also developed a hybrid policy that allows our eligible physician to work up to 50% of their work remotely. We've been collaborating with the city of Calgary and the police associations. And we've also put in considerations for IT equipment and office space into our plan. Another area at the forefront is our member wellness supports. So our support teams are working hard to provide support. So our support teams are working hard to provide support to these work areas experiencing the effects of COVID nineteen, while also experiencing those same effects as other service providers ourselves. Uh, throughout the pandemic, the chief corporate learning center remains agile on their approach to training delivery based on COVID nineteen impacts and recruit classes. On several occasions, individuals and entire classes took part through virtual learning from home. Although this training modality is not always ideal, it reduces impact to timeliness at training. Uh, finally, as, as been spoken about earlier, we uh, with the higher attrition than normal in the past two years. Uh, we've placed a strong emphasis on our sworn recruitment activities over the past several months. Uh, unfortunately, the first few months of recruitment events in twenty twenty-two were canceled due to the public health measures in place at the time. Since the recent relaxation restrictions, the recruiting selection unit has been able to increase the number of in-person outreach events and will have a better opportunity this year to recruit applicants through such activities. The lifting of restrictions will also allow our unit to increase the frequency and capacity of our uh, recruiting tests such as the physical test and the practical academic testing. We'll be up from here back over to yourself.
Great, thank you very much. Um, with that, we'll go to the second of the three reports. Um, and that is the anti-racism action plan update. Um, and we will uh, take questions after these three reports um, are completed. So I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thanks Chair. I'll just introduce Acting CEO Rand Dyer.
Thanks Chief, thanks Chair. Thanks for the opportunity to speak about this today. What I'm going to do is just go through some really quick highlights. I'm probably not going to do the justice. This area does a whole lot of work, as you know, so I'll, I'll do my best here. So from the diversity resource team. With regards to the protests, this team as well as our police liaison team work ahead of these protests and uh, work with protest organizers to help keep things safe. So this is uh, this is proven to be fairly successful and uh, it also builds some relationships. From our hate and extremism team. A number of presentations have been done. We've, uh, in the last month, we've done nineteen presentations to various groups, mostly schools, homeless shelters, things like that. Received incredibly positive feedback about this and we have another twenty-five presentations booked, so this is uh, this is important. From our crime prevention team, we have partnered with our robbery unit and the GLC to work with uh, some of the cannabis stores and, and some of the robberies that have been going on. And this is really around how to improve store security, how to change storefronts and that sort of thing to reduce some of the thefts that we're seeing there. Over to uh, uh, some indigenous education updates for you. Uh, we recently just launched a mandatory indigenous e-learning module. It's actually a series of modules that go through a number of topics, including uh, common terms used in indigenous communities, dispels historical myths, shares the principles of truth and reconciliation. Some of the other series includes treaty seven, the history of relationship between indigenous peoples and the police. The over-representation of indigenous people in the criminal justice system and reconciliation, allyship. And the police and a few. I've been through the first one. It's, it's actually remarkable training, so kudos to our uh, our learning center for putting this together. LGBTQ plus education, uh, we are enhancing our courses through some content through the Canadian Police Knowledge Network. And uh, this has been reviewed by our gender boards here at the service. And uh, yeah, and we're all starting with the RCP on this one as well, so we get sort of a national approach to this as well because other agencies are having this issue as well. Okay, um, let's see here. All right, other training will be our United Against Racism, Racism webinars starting on April fifth yesterday. These are directed towards our district parade members, so all of our district offices, and this will uh, continue to roll out over the following year. And lastly, Habitus and Action Dignity are working with the anti-racism team to finalize their strategic roadmap. This work builds on the internal engagement of our thirty to sixty minute sessions that we've had with a hundred and fifteen employees and community engagement sessions that are already underway. And that's it for me Chief. Chair.
Thank you very much. Um, and the last of the three reports is the crime update.
For crime update, we'll refer to Deputy Chief Tropic on the question. Thank you.
And Chief, and thanks Chair. Uh, I'll cover off the updates for both the Bureau of Community Policing and the Bureau of Investigative Support, as Deputy Chief Cook is unavailable due to a conflicting meeting and commitment with the CACP committee. So we'll start with homicides. As most people are aware, it's been a fairly busy period of time. Uh, as of this past weekend, for our homicide unit, we're now sitting at nine homicides for the year with four occurring in March and two so far in April. Our average for this time of year is four, so we are more than double the average thus far in twenty twenty-two. In April, our average is two homicides and we're already sitting at two within the month's first weekend. Our homicide clearance rate for twenty twenty-two is currently sitting at sixty-seven percent with six out of the nine uh, homicides cleared by charge this year, the most recent being from this past weekend. The three files that remain unclear, we're all shooting homicides, at least two of which have a suspected motivation of organized crime and/or gang activity. The past two weeks has been an extremely busy time for investigators and the numerous organizational areas that support these investigations. Uh, given the six homicides. Our teams have been working around the clock to further the investigations and bring closure to the cases as quickly as possible. Uh, these teams are relentless in their efforts to bring closure to them and our thoughts are certainly with the family and friends of all those lost due to these tragic incidents. We're going to shootings. Uh, since the beginning of twenty twenty-two, we've seen a steady decline in the number of shooting events. However, while declining, Calgary is still experiencing higher than average numbers of incidents. We had ten shootings in Calgary in March, which is significantly higher than March twenty twenty-one where we had four. And the five-year average for that month was seven. Most of the shootings that occurred in March are still under investigation, but we do know that at least half were targeted shootings. Six of the shootings resulted in property damage and another two resulted in injury to the victims. The two most significant shootings in March were uh, fatal and are both currently being investigated by the homicide unit. Uh, in two incidents, either the offender or victim is being monitored by our organized crime offender management section with the third incident involving subjects under consideration for monitoring or management. Just one shooting in March was motivated by organized crime. This was a targeted shooting that resulted in property damage. With respect to commercial robberies, we continue to see a trend here. A hundred forty-three commercial robberies year to date from January one to March thirty-first. Twenty-seven percent of those have been classified as takeover style and fifty-five percent which were linked to a series or crime trend. Uh, March saw the highest number of takeover style robberies with sixteen. There were twelve in January, ten in February. One quarter of commercial robberies linked to a trend series have been cleared by charge. Uh, the current trends uh, of these takeover cell robberies include the pharmacies, as we reported on previously, cannabis stores, cellphone stores. And uh, we've had some recently with massage parlor robberies and sexual assaults and also convenience store robberies. We have ongoing operations in, in many of those. The buy-sell robbery task force continues to work on incoming and active files pertaining to personal robberies facilitated through online buying cell sites. Since January, they have, they have fifty-five files under investigation. They've executed numerous search warrants and cleared forty-two files by way of charge on sixteen offenders. These files continue to have connections to the pharmacy, cellphone and cannabis retail robberies and the investigators are working collaboratively with other areas to further the investigations. We have seen an uptick in convenience store robberies where offenders have demanded cash, cigarettes and lottery tickets while presenting either a knife or a conducted energy weapon at the counter. District three general investigative unit has been working uh, twenty-four commercial robbery incidents targeting fast food, gas station, cannabis and convenience store locations in the districts across almost every district. Three suspects have been identified in that series and they continue to work that one. District two GIU has been working a series of six robberies involving a male producing a box cutter at convenience stores demanding cash and auto tickets. He was identified by CCTV and arrested on March thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, domestic violence and domestic reporting. As I mentioned briefly previously, in twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, both domestic violence and domestic reporting continue to follow the trajectory they've been on since mid twenty nineteen. With violence trending down and reported trending, reporting trending up compared to the average domestic violence, it's twenty-nine percent down and reporting is fifteen percent higher than average. Uh, as we did a media release there with sexual assault investigations, there's uh, activity this past month with some uh, good arrests there. In addition to the thirty files assigned to Sexual Assault Investigations Unit uh, in January, our Sexual Assault Investigative Unit was assigned to an additional fifty-four new files in February, which is significantly higher than the five-year average. That five-year average is about thirty-two for, for the month of February. Year to date, we are on par with last year with eighty-four files by the end of February compared to eighty-six at the same time last year. We've completed fourteen sexual assault evidence kits in February, bringing the year-to-date toll of the twenty-one. In March, uh, we were also able to lay charges against an individual involved in a sexual assault and robbery series targeting personal care businesses in Calgary. This individual was uh, tied to a string of those sexual assaults and was charged with four counts of sexual assault with a weapon, four counts of armed robbery and other illegal charges. Uh, for commercial break and enters, there have been several smash and grab break and enters on the seventeenth South East corridor targeting cash debit machines, tablets, TV, uh, salon products and cannabis accessories. A prolific offender has been identified for the West End series and the district operations team out of district four are investigating incidents. The East Side series continues and we are awaiting CCTV for potential suspect identification. The DOT team from district four working that series as well. Uh, between December twenty twenty-one and February twenty twenty-two, a series of thirty-two uh, glass smash break connectors were identified by crime analysts with the MO of smashing the glass with a rock then using stolen vehicles to ram the overhead doors. These incidents throughout the city included three rural RCMP investigations. Our district seven GIU, General Investigative Unit was assigned and a known prolific offender was identified and arrested for this series in February. He was charged with nineteen incidents to date and further charges are anticipated. Uh, just to go on, LRT safety initiatives. The CPS continues to partner with the Calgary Transit in the Safety for All Two Point Zero Initiative aimed at addressing crime and disorder on the LRT train and station. This initiative involves high-visibility patrols of Calgary Transit and CPS and also connecting vulnerable Calgaryans with resources and as long to reinforcement where necessary. Other city resources including Calgary Community Standards, bylaw and livery business units and contract services have been engaged. The preliminary results have been very positive. Calgary Transit is the lead on this ongoing initiative which included uh, mobile patrols at transit locations as well as on the trains themselves. Uh, in addition to for LRT safety, our district five DOT team launched an operation at the Rundle, Whitehorn and Marlborough LRT stations targeting drug traffickers and individuals involved in criminal behavior to disrupt and uh, address the disorder at those stations. Uh, these have been consistently reported by transit's high-disorder locations. Six offenders were charged with multiple drug possession, concealed weapon and possession of stolen property charges with that initiative. I'll just leave it there for uh, potential questions and uh, definitely, definitely can expand on anything you wish, so. Uh, Chair back to you for questions.
Thank you very much. Um, and thank you for those reports. I'll begin with Commissioner Sadiq, please.
Thank you Chair. Uh, thank you all for those reports. Much appreciated. My question is actually, um, I have two questions. The first one is for Deputy Chief Gil. With um, the pandemic update you gave and with all of the, some of the work being stalled because of everything that's happening, do you find that you have enough resources to do the HR modernization um, goals that you've set out? Or are you lacking in terms of that, in terms of specifically in your department to carry some of these things forward?
Commissioner, the short answer is no. Uh, but frankly, I'm not sure we'll ever have enough. There's a lot of heavy lifting to do and there's a lot of uh, uh, you know, new research, uh, new uh, processes that we could implement within modernization. Some of that includes technology. So we do work with Executive Director Dyer and his program, uh, so we can work uh, in step with them when it comes to increasing our capacity and increasing our, our, our building new processes uh, in alignment with better technology, so we can actually reduce the number of uh, person hours required and use technology. Um, but, but I think we've come a long way with our twenty twenty-one budget ask, which uh, um, there was a strong focus and thanks to the support from the police commission. Uh, we did get a number of new resources within my bureau to, uh, to help with that heavy lift. Uh, but we are working on, uh, how do we advance that and how do we accelerate some of those changes? Uh, the twenty twenty-one ask really was to uh, to shore up some critical areas that we needed. Uh, but to, to fully answer your question, we are looking at our next four-year budget ask and introducing new requests in terms of human resource uh, requests so we can continue the work that we're doing to modernization. So that's, that's a long way to say that uh, we've got some of the resources that we need. Uh, but there is much more work to be done and we hope to uh, add more resources to that over the next few years.
And, and I'm aware that twenty twenty-two has just sort of started, but out of those twenty twenty-one asks that were approved, how many of those positions do you, are filled already or still need to be filled at this point?
I don't have that handy, uh, Commissioner, but I believe uh, about three quarters have been filled and the others are, they're all within a staffing process now. Uh, some have been, most have been filled. There's just a few more that are in the final stages of the staffing process.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, the other question I had was actually, uh, going back to the anti-racism update. There was just a quick mention at the end about some work being done with action dignity and meeting with the community. I was just curious if um, that could be expanded a little bit.
Thanks for the questions, Commissioner, and I'm just waiting for Admiral Martin, Inspector Martin to uh, uh, log in. Uh, she has a few answers for that question, so just give me a minute here.
I can probably. Do you think the contract that we have with Action Dignity was in relation to the SRO uh, review and, and further? I see people, oh, maybe I.
No mic, so I can't log in, but I can come in and answer some questions if you'd like.
You're on.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Sadiq, that was your question about action dignity and uh, habitus? And their role.
Yes, please.
Engagement? Okay, yes, we have partnered with them. We partnered with them a few months back. Uh, they are going to go out into the community with uh, their cultural brokers and do uh, free tiered community engagement. One is already underway. Uh, we partnered with the city of Calgary for this community engagement, so it's a collaboration with uh, the city anti-racism program and our, our CPS anti-racism program, and so uh, this will be ongoing consultation uh, for the rest or remainder of twenty twenty-two so that we can have that two-way communication both with the community um, back with our membership uh, to inform our strategy and work and anti-racism work uh, moving forward. So that's the purpose of that, that partnership.
Awesome. Thanks Inspector. Thank you Chair.
Um, and thank you for the answers and the moving around. Uh, much appreciated. Um, Commissioner Campbell.
Thanks very much Chair. I have three questions that go over um, a number of areas, so um, we'll, we'll just take them one by one here. Um, first one is from um, agenda item five point two. Um, there's a mention of psychotherapy uh, in the report. Um, do CPS have registered third-party providers for their psychotherapy services? Was there a reduction in the availability of services overall during the pandemic?
Hi there, Commissioner. My name is Barney Boland and I'm acting executive director for Stacy Furland who's on leave right now. I think I can answer that question for you. Uh, we certainly did see an increase in the referrals and requests for psychological services over the last year. Um, we did not see a reduction in our, our service providers. The service provider number actually probably grew a little bit um, in terms of the number of supports that we were able to provide. We did notice a sharp difference in was the type of therapy that we were providing. Being that many of the providers moved to virtual mediums. being that many of the providers moved to virtual mediums to provide that service. We weren't able to do some of the trauma-based, evidence-based treatments that we would do in face-to-face encounters. So that was probably the largest shift that we did see, but in terms of numbers, I, I think we stayed pretty status quo.
Thanks very much, a bit of a follow-up on that. So you mentioned some of the services, if you could speak a little bit to more of the specific services that are available to Calgary Police Service members for mental health supports. For example, do they have a third-party EFAP line that officers can call? Are there registered psychologists in the civilian employee base? Are there counseling services that offer culturally sensitive and appropriate help for the full plurality of the service?
I'm happy to answer that as well. I think we have a fairly robust psychological services area within the CPS. We do have an EFAP program out of Life Works that is available for all members and their family members on a single-session to three-session basis. Knowing that the officers and families have probably more complex needs, we do have an internal system of civilian members. We have a team of four therapists that work with us that have backgrounds in psychology and social work that are able to provide evidence-based therapies, both to members and to their spouses and children as needed. On top of that, we have a contract list of about 200 providers in the community with specialized skill sets and treatment modalities for those that we either don't have the internal capacity to resource or that may have a specialized skill or treatment need that, that we're not able to, to meet. We are working really, really hard to make sure that our practitioner base is diverse, equitable and inclusive, accessible to all the members. And so that is something that's been in the works this year is really putting a focus on that.
Thank you very much. I'm going to flip over now to Deputy Chief Toffek and the crime report update. Quickly and really briefly, would you be able to give an example, please, of a crime that fits into each of the categories on the dashboard on page two for familiarity on how things are categorized by CPS?
So on the report, you'll notice non-domestic violence, so that would be other types of violence, like an assault where it's not a domestic situation, those types of things. Domestic violence would be in a domestic setting where there is a criminal offense that occurs, a violent criminal offense that occurs. Domestic reporting would be where there, we may be called to the scene, but there is no criminal offense or they're actually before something happens and can intervene in a different manner. The residential break and enter would be obviously a residence versus a commercial property. So someone brings into the residence, it's those categories. Commercial B and E being, break and enter being, any commercial property, store, business, that type of thing. You know, like a storage yard, those types of things. Vehicle theft is, that's kind of self-explanatory with it being any, any cars that are actually stolen. And then car prowling would be going into the cars, removing contents, but not taking the car itself. So just stealing contents or stealing things from the vehicle. And then social disorder could be any number of categories, unwanted guests, noise, just noise complaints, disturbances in public, those types of things.
Thank you very much, Deputy Chief Toffek. That's, that's helpful. I, I don't typically think of unwanted guests as guests, but we'll, we'll carry on.
That's the way I did it, so that's the way we refer to it.
Fair enough, thank you. My last question is a bit difficult, but it, it does relate to the crime report in Agenda Item 5.4, and it's with respect to the homicide tragically of the late Ms. Latissure. What work with respect to, I'm going to say sort of victim services is being conducted to support residents in the Beltline, East Village, and Downtown who may feel vulnerable, targeted, and at risk, given the randomness of this incident?
Well, I might start here, Commissioner Campbell, and I might just queue up Ryan if you're still on the call as a superintendent of major crimes. But typically what we see, Commissioner Campbell, is that victim services support is what hopefully would be offered to the family and made available in cases, all cases, but I mean, this one is particularly tragic. I think those, a lot of times there's a follow-up that gets done in relation to the community as well, but other than that, it would, it would typically fall through one district and the ongoing relationships between the Community Resource Office and, and the community residence associations, these types of things, the ongoing relationships. So sometimes there would be questions or concerns or, or also supports offered to the businesses where Ms. Latissure was employed, employed, or this type of thing. I don't know, Ryan, if you're still longer, if you want to add to that.
Sorry, Chief, I only cut the last bit, we were having a cyber discussion. What was, what was the question?
I can, I can, Chief, I have to say, I think I can probably help out, but I apologize.
No, it's quite okay, I can ask that question again. And it's with respect to the homicide of the late Ms. Latissure and what type of work typically with respect to victim services is being conducted to support residents and community members in the Beltline, East Village, and Downtown who may feel vulnerable, targeted, and at risk, given the randomness of this incident?
Well, what the chief said is accurate. I can tell you that we, through major crimes and on our initial response, we will work primarily with the family to start out, but we do ask probably questions about who else is impacted by this and so forth and so on. We will partner almost immediately with our diversity teams and give them key messaging and resourcing so that when they go out and they talk to those community groups, they can access it as well. I'll give you an example without using, without using names as a result of something very similar in another incident of all day, a marginalized community. We had people approaching members that were playing organized CPS sports that had in their hands some of the reference material that had been given to them at, at community events, and they were referred back to our major crimes people who then worked through them specific to that event. So we will continue to work with, with anybody that's traumatized, but we, we have to engage other partners within the service in order to reach a lot of these different groups because we just don't have that capacity alone in major crimes.
Okay, thank you. So if I understand the responses, I, I can expect for residents of the Beltline, East Village, and Downtown who may feel vulnerable and targeted or at risk will in due course be receiving some kind of connection from CPS to discuss that, that, that trauma.
We, if we are able to connect to them through community events, then yes, we will connect to them. It's, if we don't know who they are and how they're feeling, we can't make that connection. But we offer it as we reach out into the community through our diversity unit. And our investigators, when they canvas for evidence or they talk to community members for further leads, always give that option to anybody they. It's on the back of our witness statements, it's, it's part of the material that we give out at all times. That is a very important piece for our investigative teams, our district teams, and for sure, our diversity areas. We're all connected in that regard. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner North Pagan.
Yes, my question goes back to the Anti-Racism Action Plan update. Just being out in a boat in the community, I actually ran into Constable Chamberlain and Constable Thompson who discussed the e-learning that's been going on with the CPS. And one of the things that I was very intrigued by is their ability to actually engage in the community to find out what this e-learning should entail going forward and if this was actually the right process platform to begin this type of learning upon. I think my question is more directed towards, because this is such a new initiative and there was, you know, some of the things that were discussed within the community that e-learning doesn't sometimes hit the mark where it's supposed to go and how can we evolve this moving forward from what we have? Ideally, I think this is the right path to go on because, like I said, our knowledge keepers tell us that education got us into this mess, it's education that's going to get us out of it. So I would be very interested if we can actually bring this e-learning, you know, have a topic around this in our Anti-Racism Subcommittee to help maybe provide some guidance as to how it can evolve in a longer process, because like I said, we don't want the training to go dormant or to be redundant. We want it to evolve alongside the CPS. And if the, since the, the two constables there were so great about going out and engaging with the Indigenous community and finding out if this was number one, the first solution, you know, a good way to actually do this. I think if we could actually bring that to the Subcommittee and present it to folks here from the community on the commission to possibly provide some guidance as to how this can actually evolve in, in going into the future. But I just wanted to put a mark on that and for people to understand that we do have the two constables out in the Indigenous community engaging on this e-learning project with CPS. And it's been very fantastic to see how this is, you know, this has created some dialogue within the Indigenous community. So that's, that's what I'm asking is we, if we could bring it to the Anti-Racism Subcommittee.
Commissioner North Pagan, it's Raj Gill here. Thanks, thanks for those comments, I appreciate those. As you said so well, you know, under Executive Director Rory Thompson and under Deputy McClellan, those two areas partnered very closely to develop that Indigenous awareness training. And as I've indicated before, we're really changing our approach under Executive Director Thompson's leadership in how we do training in the Calgary Police Service, and we are really getting away from that one-and-done type of training where we want this to be integrated in everything we do. It's a part of our work around being anti-racist and being culturally sensitive and culturally aware. So when you talk about the training, you know, Acting Sergeant Chamberlain and Constable Thompson engage with our Indigenous communities to build that training in partnership. So it's not something we built internally, we went to the experts, we went to the people with the lived experience and built the training with them and with the direction under Rory's team of how best to deliver that to our members. So this one will be done over the course of a year, and that's just the first part. We rolled out episode one of that training this week. There's 15 different episodes of that e-learning, so it will go on for an extended period of time. But I would certainly like to maybe offline have a conversation with you to maybe expand a little bit more on what you said of how we can engage a bit further on that, particularly with our commission members and sharing that training with you. And then, as you said, how do we take that to the next level and continue that dialogue, continue that engagement? So that's perhaps something that maybe we can take off, maybe we can discuss it at the, at the ARAC Subcommittee and, and take that further, because I think what you suggest has a lot of, a lot of value and I think there's a lot of opportunities to take that forward. So with that, I'll flip it over to Executive Director Rory Thompson, just to add a few more comments to that.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, just to build on that, when we approached this training, we really tried to approach it in the long term, but also very cognizant of where we are as an organization in terms of our learning. And I completely agree with you that e-learning has a place, but it's not going to get us to that behavior change that we really want here. What we're focusing on right now is around that awareness and we're building that into 15 small e-learnings, which will be rolled out one per month. And they are also designed, and the intent is to be rolled out at a parade as well. So you're doing the e-learning as part of a group to really instigate that discussion and take that learning a little bit further too. And the intent here is after we've done the 15, we're then going to put our members through a 20-hour course that will build on all the learning objectives and principles that they'll have been exposed to during the e-learning. And so we're not just going to, to Debbie's point, that one-and-done, ticking the box. This is really about that long-term approach that we're hoping to see the change in some of our culture, but also increase that understanding along the way as well.
I was very excited to hear the initiative in the wind. I heard it first of all, and then I had to get my, you know, get my two bits in there, but you know what? I think I really want to be a part of this project because I see value in it. And yes, I would love to have outside conversation and see how this can actually evolve along. And I was very excited to hear that CPS was doing this and especially, you know, with our knowledge keepers, it was good, good work.
Thank you very much, and thank you for those responses, and we'll look forward to hearing more, thanks. And Counselor, Commissioner, well cut, please go ahead.
Thank you so much, and I, I really just want to quickly echo Commissioner North Pagan's comments about wanting to be involved. I think a huge part of this work as commission is, is, is actually to kind of be a part of that journey as well too. So that, that feedback, feedback loop, it's, it's continuous and ongoing and I would, I would be very interested in actually even just going so far as to take the e-learning module myself to just compound on some of my own, my own personal education and just love of teaching in general. But sorry, I digress. The first question that, that I really had, the questions, although be, they're not, they're not, they separated very, very well into like many different things, they're very specific into, I just, it's just a crime, one quick question on the crime stats. A one on, this one on the injunction and then one generally in, in just public perception of, of the police, that, that's kind of just the, the, the area. But the first one, I think, would be to Deputy Chief Toffek. The number of deaths that, that we've seen obviously is staggering for both the CPS and just for the community in, in general. And I honestly, I applaud the, the clearance rate that we're seeing from CPS. I think every time I open the news and I, and I see a new death and then I, within a few days, I'm seeing an arrest or some, some really early-stage closure coming into these cases. And I really do want to applaud the speed because those are exceptionally traumatic events for CPS officers in the community. So I guess the, the, to, to kind of depersonalize it into that question of data. You know, it's like we're seeing these crime trends reaching back to the five-year average, but we just came out of two pretty sporadic years. So I'm just a little curious for some clarity. The average, the average five years that we're looking at, do they happen to be pre-pandemic averages? Or are we including kind of the ebbs and flows that we saw in the last two years as well too? Just so I can have some relative understanding of, of what our benchmark is.
Thanks for the question, Commissioner. It would include the last previous five years, so inclusive of 2021 and 2020, which would be the two pandemic largely influenced years. So that does vary the numbers slightly, we did see some reductions there across a number of crime categories, but it does give us a general sense of where we sit across the five years.
Okay, yeah, and I, I know like we quite often report on that five-year average, I think, pretty, pretty regularly. I think it was pretty easy to find historically. I'm just, so, so thank you for, for that clarity. Um, this, this, I think the question will probably end up with you as well too for the injunction based off just like Agenda Item 5.2. But we're, I'm, I'm kind of curious about the, the phasing out or at least the tapering down of the injunction and as we look towards kind of community reaction. So in particular, you know, following the incident on, on March 12th, it was kind of like pre-injunction versus post-injunction. We saw like massive differences in our, in your ability to, to, to police and handle the crowds with some pretty, pretty great successes. But I'm, but I'm curious, the March 12th incident was, was hard for, for many members of the community. In our special meeting, we were flooded with letters, so I'd be curious to know maybe your perspective on when the police, the CPS use of force on kind of Calgary residents that, that happened on that, that particular day. What steps are, are being taken to restore trust and feelings of safety when we discuss perception of policing following that event?
Thanks for the question, Commissioner. Our District One Community Resource Officer team is really engaging with the Beltline and the residents there and businesses around the impacts. And we, you know, it started with the town hall that we held even before we, you know, took some more action there, but it will continue and we know that's, that's not going to be a one-stop shop around engaging with community that way. So those engagements will continue into the future here. And as we go into, you know, discussions around what the playoffs might look like and the impacts around that coming our way, it just increases that importance of having those connections, so that's happening as we speak. I know Inspector Smart in District One is certainly engaging accordingly. I know Inspector Smart in District One is certainly engaging accordingly. And we're looking to have a town hall as well around that and to keep those bridges connected and to seek additional feedback from the community as we move forward. So it's an ongoing process and we expect it to continue.
Yeah, just, just a quick, quick follow-up on that. The town halls are, I think, are great opportunities to interface. Were those, was that a regular thing that's been done? Or is this kind of like a new, newer strategy that's come out of some of the extraordinary circumstances we've seen in the past two years?
I think they've been done previously, but COVID obviously had a, an initial impact on our ability to do that as much as we would like. But certainly it's something that, you know, our, our CROs are very engaged with across the organization. For one, it's a very efficient way to get feedback. And it's also just a good way to be open to our community. So we plan to continue that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay. There's the follow, the next question is really just on the injunction as well too. Trying to figure out just the kind of the shifting sands that came into that space. So did CPS actively consider, we know that the city of Calgary was the one who actually had to apply for the injunction itself. So maybe I was wondering if you could speak to CPS actively considering the injunction or collaborating with the city on injunction prior, given the longevity of these protests, you know, like when, when did this become a legitimate option for us to be able to use? Given this kind of the scope of the permits in the park or the marches, the things that essentially recovered under the injunction had been ongoing for a while. So just curious, yeah, when did that become a tool that the CPS wanted to collaborate with?
Yeah, thanks for the question. And certainly the topic of the injunction has come up numerous times over the course of the pandemic. In fact, in May of twenty twenty-one, we saw the first experience that we had in following through with enforcement of an injunction. That was the one that AHS had obtained. So we, we worked through that and we certainly learned a lot going through those different processes about whether police are at the table to inform what an effective injunction might look like. And we've seen ones where police haven't been involved, not necessarily in our jurisdiction, but in other jurisdictions where they weren't. And the injunction basically was useless for all intents and purposes. So leading into the one that, you know, when push came to shove, literally with the, you know, the need to move that direction from the city's perspective, we, we were able to provide some support as far as what the public safety concerns were that were in front of us and what would need to happen to be effective. So I think that was helpful in moving forward.
And when, to just a quick follow-up, when you refer to kind of like without enforcement, the injunction is relatively useless. I guess then the question would be with, how do I phrase this? I'm trying to figure it out here. It's like, if, if the CPS, you are the deciding body on the utility of an injunction, but not the deciding body on the application of one. So there seems like there's a little bit of a disconnect on who might push one forward. So one of the, the comments that, you know, came out of post-injunction application was that it was the exact tool we needed to do this work. And, you know, the is, was that simply just because the fear of, of physical conflict that arose from the March 12th incident? Or was it, was it a recognition of the kind of the permits, the marching, the business impacts, the community impacts? I'm trying to figure out what was the catalyst?
Yeah, to answer your question, it was actually the sequence of events that led to us being in a position to actually get the injunction. So the prior weekend to that injunction being granted, the behavior of certain protest groups had escalated to the point where it was becoming a public safety issue. So the leading up to that for the year prior, we hadn't experienced that same level of, we'll call it lack of cooperation. So when that happened, that was really a turning point that said, okay, we have, as a city, we have to do something different. And I think that was where at that point, the tool would become effective. Prior to that, it wasn't deemed, you know, we were gaining fairly good cooperation, that type of thing. So it really wasn't going to be that necessary. But once we were granted it, it did give us additional powers that otherwise, you know, we do have powers under bylaw to give tickets and do things like that. But we'd seen that that wasn't effective and deterred behavior.
Okay. And yeah, like what I'm kind of curious to as well to build on that because I agree. The, the attitudes of the protests, they shifted. I think a boiling point was obviously reached after several years of varying forms of what we were seeing, whether or not it was the ones in Inglewood to Princess Island Park, to Central Memorial, to which then evolved into the march. Could you speak to kind of like what barriers to enforcement, like were encountered prior to the injunction? We talked about, yeah, we've talked about the cooperation of the organizers, but there are certain aspects that I think we saw that we knew were, I guess, we saw were happening anyway. So I'm curious what kind of barriers were encountered prior to the injunction that also contributed to the success of it?
Certainly happy to answer that, although some of the response that we want to provide might actually inform tactics, both from protest perspective. So it's probably best we take those offline, but there, there certainly were barriers that we've encountered over the last two years around our ability to enforce.
Okay, yeah, no, absolutely. That's, that's fair. I, I tried my best to slip them into the, these, divide these up appropriately, but I'll, I'll take that one into the camera side. So this one, this is kind of a follow-up as well because there was a, a one of the legacies of some of these protests, of course, in the Beltline and in the surrounding communities was the presence of like white supremacy stickers and the different, the different kind of white supremacy, whether it be graffiti, whether, however, we describe the vandalism of those stickers that existed within that space. Last week, a hate crime investigation was opened for graffiti that was found on Seventeenth Ave that appeared to be in response to those, those stickers. So what I was kind of curious about is how come a similar tactic wasn't, wasn't made for the stickers that we have been historically seeing? Like a hate, so a hate crime investigation and a, and a public report. Just curious why that same tactic wasn't used on those stickers as was to the graffiti that we found?
Thanks for the question, Commissioner. Just for your awareness, there, there was investigations and there are investigations in relation to those stickers. So that is, I've confirmed that with our hate crime and extremism team, so that that is happening behind the scenes. One of the reasons where you may or may not go to media on things is what's really happened. The stickers, although offensive, they aren't necessarily a crime, but there, I can see why they would cause concern. Those stickers specifically have been identified throughout the province, not just in Calgary. And we are aware that we have represented that works in the provincial hate crimes coordination unit. And they share information and intelligence all the time across the province around what we're seeing. So we're able to respond to it. So the member in hate, hate crime and, or an extremism unit that's investigating this is following through with that investigation. And as we proceed, there's something that would necessitate bringing it forward for a public announcement, we would.
No, that's, it's, it's good to know that it's, it's kind of bigger, right? And, and you know, this, this one isolated incident that we saw on Seventeenth versus these stickers and the associated incidents that exist outside of the Beltline spaces being treated as such. Okay. I guess the, is my last question, I promise.
Oh, Commissioner, well, I'm just very aware of the fact that we have actually one more report and presentation on the escalation policy to come yet. And we're way past time already. So if it's really important, can you ask it quickly? And then, well, Commissioner Zhang has one as well. So, yeah, so we have one more report on the de-escalation policy, which is actually a pretty new evolution of what has been worked on by CPS. So I think we want to hear that, but we're just running up against the here.
Sorry, that's on me. I was, I had intended to like split these up across the reports, but when we bundled them, they all came out at once. I will be, I'll, I'll happy to see to Commissioner Zhang.
Thanks. Maybe we'll come back this or even in camera with CPS. Thank you. Commissioner Zhang, any last quick question perhaps?
Yes, it's a quick, just a follow-up on the protest. After the temporary injunction granted, the last three weekends, CPS very publicly announced that each, I think, pretty much every weekend, there was somebody arrested for outstanding warrants. So are those warrants related to their protest in other cities or something totally irrelevant to, to the protest?
Thanks, Commissioner Zhang. Each one is sort of individual in nature. I can tell you that some were local warrants, but they were unrelated, some were related, some were unrelated to, to the actual prior protest activity.
Okay, thanks. That's on my call, your chair.
Thank you very much. And thank you for those reports. There's, as you can see so much in there and relevant to all of the things that are going on in the city. And I just wanted just to comment that, you know, I continue to appreciate again and again, the breadth of the work that goes on between cybercrime and the work on anti-racism and protests and all of the rest of that. It's, it's a huge volume of work. With that, we'll go on to the last piece, the presentation or the last report, the presentation on the de-escalation policy, which used to be the use of force policy. So if you can go ahead with that and I appreciate that there was not a pre-reading, but if we can make focus on the highlights and then we will go back to questions from commission. So over to you.
Thank you. We'll do a quick introduction. Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Chair. I'm just doing a quick few opening comments. And I'm going to hand it over to Executive Director Rory Thompson and Inspector Nadine Wagner on the presentation itself. Chair, as you know, the CPS members work very hard to deliver high-quality police services to keep our community and citizens safe. One way we, sorry, one way we do that is by continuously monitoring, reviewing and implementing the latest research and best practices in relation to police and public safety policies and protocols. By doing so, we maintain public trust and confidence through the professional approach our members take to their duties every day in order to serve Calgary. To that end, we completed a lengthy and comprehensive review and overhaul of the CPS use of force policy, following both our internal research and the Whitman report that was completed by Justice Whitman. I'll hand it over to Executive Director Thompson from our Learning and Recruitment Division and Inspector Wagner from our Chief Group Learning Center to provide the commission with the presentation on our new de-escalation and use of force policy.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. Today I'm joined by Inspector Nadine Wagner, who is not only the commander of the Chief Group Learning Center, she is also the Chair of the De-escalation and Use of Force Committee. So de-escalation and use of force as a whole as remains and will continue to remain as a critical importance for CPS. As we're more than aware, it's absolutely essential in order to maintain the public trust with our communities. As such, we are extremely excited to share the enhancements that have been made to the de-escalation and use of force policy. Inspector Wagner is going to walk us through the need for change and will also provide a summary of the enhancements that we've made to the policy itself. And the final policy is a result and a great example of using data to inform decisions as well as inform policy, as well as collaboration and consultation with several of our key stakeholders and partners, of which are QR, our membership, unions, including the Calgary Police Association, academia, research, external A-RAC committee, other Canadian police services, as well as internal, external audit reports and trends. So we're really proud of the final result that we have, which Inspector Wagner is going to walk us through. As we really think it sets our members up for success, it also optimizes our frontline resources as well as meeting the expectations and the needs of the community. So without further ado, I will hand it over to Inspector Wagner to present.
So much. Good afternoon, Chair and Commission Members. Just give me one sec to share my screen. I have a short presentation that some of you have already seen. So thank you again for having me here today to share the enhancements that have been made to our use of force policy in the public meeting today. The Calgary Police Service feels really strongly that the changes made incorporate the recommendations that we received, including, no, one second. Thank you for your patience. I need to stand this team and not do so. A little left start. So I'll just start at the beginning. Thanks for having me. I'm really excited to share about the enhancements today to our use of force policy. The Calgary Police Service feels really strongly that the changes made have incorporated the recommendations that we've been, that we've received. And it addresses the concerns that also have been raised by our community that we serve. As a result, this improved upon policy will be the foundation to promote trust, confidence and understanding in how we resolve incidents where use of force is required to ensure the safety of victims, community, officers and subjects. I'd like to share the need for change. I am caught changes of the time and that some have heard this presentation in February. So today my focus will be on the highlights, leaving room for questions. So as you heard, there are several reports, audits and recommendations that have been presented to CPS of the last few years for us to have an opportunity reflect upon our current training and policies around use of force. Of course, the tragic death of George Floyd amplified this discussion. In order to ensure a thorough review was conducted, a group of individuals across the organization with various expertise were brought together, including our internal group of individuals from our anti-racist committee. And they were brought together to do this extensive review. The de-escalation use of force committee were given the autonomy to make the necessary changes to policy to support our members in the execution of their duties and to ensure our community feels confident when de-escalation options have been exhausted or if the option never existed in the first place, that the level of force was abused or the level of force used was to alter preserve life and only as much force was used to resolve the situation. Well, let's talk about the highlights of the changes. The de-escalation, de-escalation use of force committee did not complete this work in isolation. As you've already heard, a lot of collaboration and comprehension of the reports and collaboration with our executive, our anti-racist committee, both internal and external, as well as our association. First off, we recognize our current policy wasn't telling the entire story, resulting in an immediate name change. Officers use force as a last resort to gain compliance to preserve life. And absent of including this in the title, it's no wonder our community didn't understand that de-escalation is the first consideration in everything that we do. Adding it to the title elevates the importance CPS places on these strategies and tactics that are a part of all aspects of our training, but also including the tangible definition our members can understand and apply to their everyday, identifies all opportunities of de-escalation they practice in every interaction they have with the public. A huge evolution of the policy has been the vast improvement of the statement of principles to include our core values and highlighting the principles of necessity, reasonableness and proportionality as aligned in our, in law. NRP simply, you know, stated, and sorry, simply stated or understood translates, just we can, just because we can doesn't mean we should. The other big change was the removal of our lateral vascular neck restraint. This technique has not been trained in CPS since COVID restrictions have been in place for the last two years and the service is no longer certified in this technique. Although we've used this technique for the last fifteen years, we recognize it came at a time before we had other tools on our belt such as taser and amplified tactics to support our training principles of time and distance. ONG should not be mistaken for a joke, old. This technique is a certified patent level of force designed by the National Law and Force Training Center and over the last forty years has never reported a death, injury or litigation. CPS also recognized the perception of this technique has in our community. And combined with these concerns, the low use and other tools and tactics available, it is no longer included as a use of force option that CPS trains or certifies our members in. Reporting requirements have also been enhanced in this policy. Our newest version of Subject Behavior Officer Response rolled out on January 3rd of this year and addressed the audit recommendations, and thus far has appeared seamless. I am looking forward to review the data that the first quarter to truly measure how the Calgary Police Service are doing. This also goes hand in hand in how our supervisors review these events. Frontline supervisors now have discretion for specific use of force options, whether or not they will attend the scene in real time. This supports our workforce deployment model and is in the best interest of resource management. A simple example around discretionary attendance of a supervisor may include when the presentation of a taser or R1 is shown to a subject, however not actually used. I would suggest this is a perfect example of de-escalation through voluntary compliance and strong strategic communication by our officers. The last two pieces include duty to intervene and subject aftercare. Neither of these practices are new to us. They've always been the expectation and trained, but never been in policy. This again demonstrates the importance of these principles and the alignment to our core values and the duty of care to individuals in our custody. So the last time I was here, we talked about next steps. I'm happy to report that the de-escalation use of force policy has been ruled out at the end of February of 22. The communication strategy was created to support thoughtful discussions at the commander level with our members, and this was done purposely to enhance dialogue and served as an important step for our members. So they too could understand the why behind these substantial amendments and enhancements to our policy. We work in a very fast paced, ever changing environment, and we need to adapt to main confidence and trust of the community we serve by ensuring our training and policies remain current. We continue to meet as a committee to discuss the trends that surface around use of force events, and our policy will be reviewed semi annually, so we are more adaptable in our response and interactions with the community. Another example that's already taken place in the first quarter of this year is swarm members have an annual requalification around our strategic communications. Our committee around de-escalation use of force reviewed this e-learning already to ensure it is aligned with the new policy and the enhancements, and our internal A-RAC committee reviewed it with the EDI list. I remain in constant communication with Inspector, Inspector Avril Martin and the external A-RAC committee. They're beginning their second term and are aware that I'm happy to return at any time to answer questions and continue this important dialogue with community and how the service instills de-escalation in everything we do for them the first day of recruit training, right up to the last day an officer serves their community before retirement. Lastly, we are looking forward to hosting commission members to our facilities to show our officer, show how our officers are trained in de-escalation tactics. In addition, you may have been following our social media camp, media campaign with our most recent graduate of recruit class 239. We are about to release a video from their de-escalation and strategic communication scenario training that demonstrates the tools they receive for everyday call, like neighborhood dispute, noise complaint, all the way to de-escalating individual mental health crisis crisis to highlight the professional service our members provide to meet the needs of the community we serve. The other aspect around social, the social media campaign, our two other objectives around supporting our recruiting stack strategy to demonstrate the training in real life to potential applicants out there to understand what recruit training looks like and in fact, how they will serve community once complete, and also demystify and create better understanding around how police officers are trained in de-escalation. I will stop sharing my screen now, and I am open to any questions that any of you may have.
Great. Thank you for that. Very interesting work. Commissioner Campbell, please go ahead.
Thanks very much, Chair. Thank you very much for that, Inspector Wagner. The first time we met was under terrible circumstances, so it's very good to see you here through video. At least not quite in person, but one day again. Would you please speak to the use of police canine units, use of force, culturally sensitive de-escalation techniques? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. I appreciate the question. The tactics around police dog and it being a tactic to de-escalate and to support our officer's safety and using only as much force as necessary is aligned with this policy. So I might not be understanding the full question that you're asking.
Sure. Thanks very much, Inspector Wagner. What I'm looking to understand is the use of a canine unit and a police dog in a situation in an incident, rather pardon me, with with members of the diverse communities we have in Calgary. And isn't it, when does it become a de-escalation technique? And when is it a use of force? And I'm trying to understand the the spectrum of that. Is it appropriate? And that's a question I don't understand. And then what would a culturally sensitive de-escalation technique look like for certain racialized communities within Calgary?
Thank you so much, Commissioner Campbell. I don't think that I'm the best person to speak to all of this at this moment. I think what would better answer and seek clarity and understanding around how the Calgary Police Service uses canine dogs would be by the unit itself. So this is something that I could include in the presentation or the day the commission attends headquarters for better understanding, and then we can definitely keep that dialogue open on how we can inform ourselves best around those cultural sensitivities.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Walcott.
This one is a short one. Don't worry, everybody. Just one of the Whitman recommendation, Whitman report recommendations is enhancing the dispatcher's ability to recognize a mental health crisis in in an effort to support the dispatching of the appropriate units or officers and because that actually happens without like like outside of like a major part of CPS. I'm curious if that work has begun or is underway, especially given even some of the provincial changes to co-locating the 911 work. But, you know, I just look back at some of the incidents we've had even in the last couple of of months with Latour Tool as as an example, where I reflect on if if at the the beginning of that first call, if we were more prepared to identify a mental health crisis, is that might have actually adjusted the ability for CPS to respond accordingly? I'm so curious if that part of the Whitman report is is within the scope of this work.
Yes, Commissioner, I'll I'll take that question just privy to the work going on with Calgary 911 and 211 about co-location and working through. As the calls come in, that pilot is in motion now, so that as the caller calls into Calgary 911, that there is access to that type of assessment at the front end before we start to dispatch resources now. Of course, that always has to be based on the the right circumstances. So if there is concerns for violence or weapons, we obviously wouldn't be putting people without training or preparedness into that situation first and foremost. But for situations where certainly a different resource might be the best alternative, that would be helpful.
Yeah, that that's actually kind of what I was really hoping to to hear as well, too, is that that the the 211 response is is a part of this this work. Just a quick follow up. It's in scenarios where, you know, especially with regard to use of force, given the the statistics of mental health crisis and lethal force. The mental health professionals that are kind of working together in the 211, are they trained or is that a part of this training to be to be able to dispatch, say, something like the PAC team? Or are they more closely trained to identify identify when an alternative response might be needed? So just to be very specific, when there is a weapon involved with someone who is also simultaneously like the intersection of a weapon and a mental health crisis? If those, uh, if if that work is also kind of a part of this scope, just for clarity.
Just to verify the the procedures in Calgary 911 would be based on a set of questions that they have with every type of call. So if a call comes in, they're going to ask if there's a weapon, if there are these risks are there, and if they aren't, we go down one call path. If they aren't there, then that would open the door to going to the 211 option. So that that's kind of how that would work, and then they would have the expertise to to provide the necessary supports that it's something that I think our members want to have happen as well, because sometimes we go to calls where there's probably better resources there.
Yeah. Okay. I think that's, again, we'll we'll probably have this conversation down the line, but that's 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 perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Walcott. Commissioner Lynch Proctor.
Thanks, Chair. Uncharacteristically, I have a couple of questions. One was just to follow on, are there any recommendations from the Whitman Report that are not incorporated into this revised policy?
Sorry, the guy with the cameras. Yeah, we've got the, we've got the camera in superintendent Pror's hands. The reaction time is very fast. Commissioner, to your to your question, there's 86 recommendations in the Whitman Report. Not all of them dealt with use of force. So the one that did deal with use of force, those have all been incorporated into this updated de-escalation policy.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And when you were reviewing, you know, de-escalation best practices, was there any collaboration or review of other police services policies? And if so, did you identify any big gaps or big differences between jurisdictions?
Yeah. So Commissioner, the answer is yes, we did do some benchmarking with other agencies in terms of modifications or changes that they've made in the preceding few years to their use of force and de-escalation policies. So we didn't do a lot of benchmarking with our Canadian counterpart agencies. I'll flip it over to Inspector Wagner if she can answer or add more details to that.
Thank you, Debbie. The other thing that I will contribute to this response is a lot around LBNR. That was mixed across the country. And so as that assessment was being done by our organization, we were weighing out based on our training, other options, obviously reflecting the needs of community when we were making that assessment. The other aspect that I will highlight is just a profession in general. Across the board, we were missing the mark. We weren't telling our community or or sharing with the community the the rigor around and the importance around de-escalation on the onset. From day one, when you become a police officer, we are always looking for parts of de-escalation in every aspect that we do. But we just would prefer always to use the force, which automatically language has meaning, and that part of language puts people that don't understand or or what goes into our training probably to the worst or the 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 worst part of the ending. Even speaking to Debbie Topics Comment around 211, our members are asking the same questions on the air as they're arriving. That those are aspects of de-escalation. How do we have the resources there in our teams, the tools present? Can we engage further online through 911? Maybe there's a mental health professional that we can have contact with before we even arrive. So these are all aspects that, again, the Calgary Police Service recognizes that they can do better to tell that complete story to community that we are not jumping to a level of force. That's one unlawful, most importantly, and two unnecessary, and that goes back to the necessary reasonable and proportionate abilities of our officers to make those decisions and continue to use their strategic comms as their first line of defense.
Chris, I'll just add one point to your your question on that collaboration. So long story short, we continue to collaborate with other services, be more closer to home. The Alberta Chiefs of Police Association does have a specific committee that addresses use of force. So that ongoing collaboration specifically with EPS to make sure we are aligned in Alberta as well as ongoing all types.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation and for all of these presentations. Again, the the breadth of the work that gets done. And I think it's one of the things that comes to my mind is that we are we are all understanding the importance of communicating what gets done behind the scenes, the fact that this policy has been revised and will be revised and ongoing review and ongoing training. But, you know, that can all be going on. But if we don't tell anyone about it, then then it's it's less effective. So thank you very much for all of this and for and for your dedication to to bringing this information to us. We very much appreciate it. So with that, I'll go to the next couple of items in the public session. The next is the Executive Director's Report, so I will ask Acting Executive Director Deborah Patrick to please provide her report now.
Thank you, Chair. There is a written report. I have nothing to add, but happy to take questions.
Are there any questions? No, hearing none. Thank you very much. We will go on to the representative update. So for those on the call, various members of commissions also work with other organizations and associations in their role as commissioners. So the first person will be a report on the Alberta Association for Police Governance, which is Commissioner Zhang.
Thanks. I have no addition to the public session report. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Commissioner. And then the second is the Canadian Association of Police Governance. Commissioner Siddiqui, is any highlights that you'd like to make on that?
No additions to my report, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I sit on the Calgary Police Youth Foundation and have nothing to add to the existing information other than there's some really good work going on and looking for additional funding and grants to work at expanding their programs with at-risk youth. However, nothing finalized at this point. So that's it for the CPYF. And then the next one is the Alberta Law Enforcement Response Team's Civilian Association Committee, which is has Commissioner North Pagan as the representative.
Well, we finished our two strategic planning sessions, so we're just awaiting a final report from those two sessions as to what our next steps are. Other than that, I couldn't take questions if anybody hasn't.
Seeing no questions, I will thank everyone for their reports. That is the end of the presentation and reports for today. We'll now invite public guests who've registered to speak to do so. One of our staff will invite you to unmute yourself one at a time. We have recently changed our practices around public participation to provide more opportunity for people to get a response to their questions and concerns. We've also tried our best to balance the desire to hear from the public with the need to keep meetings a reasonable length. Those of you who registered to provide a presentation will have four minutes to speak, followed by commissioners having an opportunity to ask brief clarifying questions. Those who register to ask a question will have two minutes to speak, followed by a member of the commission or Calgary Police Service having two minutes to respond. Please keep your comments to the topic you provided when you registered. We also cannot discuss any complaint about a specific employee of the service or interaction with the police. If you would like to discuss a complaint against an officer or another employee, please contact our Public Complaint Director or the Calgary Police Service Professional Standards Section. please contact our Public Complaint Director or the Calgary Police Service Professional Standards Section. We typically limit this portion of the meeting to five public speakers due to time constraints. It's been extremely rare for us to have more than five people wanting to speak. However, today, there was significant interest due to recent high-profile crimes and the commission's decision on the thin blue line. Given the broad public interest in those topics, I've um, agreed to allow twice the number of speakers than usual at this meeting, so more voices can be heard on these issues. I would ask that the speakers and commissioners bear this in mind when we speak, um, as we need to stick pretty closely to time limits out of respect for everyone here. Finally, a reminder to members of the media that we will hear from the public first, then we'll hold a media availability for you after adjourning the public meeting. So I will ask, uh, Director Oddland, if you could please put through the first speaker.
Thank you Chair Cornet. Our first speaker is Mr. Eddie Su, who is providing a presentation on the effects of systemic racism in the Asian community. Go ahead, please Mr. Su.
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, my, uh, yes, my topic today is, uh, actually, uh, reflecting the appreciation of, uh, executive of the CPS, uh, for their great work and great, uh, mission, uh, for, uh, improving the, uh, uh, eradication of the systematic racism of CPS, but also a great, uh, work have to be, uh, great improvement have to be brought to the operation level of officers, uh, so that they can, uh, catch up with the great vision of the executives. So this is a follow-up, a presentation of last, uh, my joining of last meeting in, uh, November, in which I raised the concern of, uh, Asian becoming the victim of unconventional racism of CPS that is, uh, not in kind of library, uh, life-threatening, uh, cases, but more in kind of, uh, uh, relatively minor cases, uh, like, uh, ticket issuing and, uh, 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 poverty, uh, poverty, uh, related cases, but those should not be ignored either. So after, uh, that meeting, I was arranged to, uh, be meet, uh, in person with very high-ranked officials from CPS, which I really uh, appreciate, and my allies have been taken very serious from them. And they also, uh, make, recommend that I can apply for, uh, joining the uh, CPS Asian Advisory Board. So I make the application, I was also contacted by the, uh, uh, Asian, uh, Advisory, uh, Board Officers. And, uh, my application was declined because, uh, two, uh, two members already, uh, si- sitting, uh, for that position for more than ten years and they will be remaining in that position for the foreseeable future. I find it's perfectly fine, and I was also delighted that this mechanism is in place and will play an vital role in conveying, uh, the concern from the Asian community to the Calgary Police Services. But as I had done some intensive and in-depth, uh, searches and homework to find the effective way to, like, connect it to them, I find, uh, the result is very disappointing and concerning. Because after a very extensive and in-depth, uh, search on either uh, on internet or, uh, very intensive and in-depth, uh, search, uh, within the Asian community, I cannot find even one piece of information about these two sitting members. So I couldn't help wondering, even if I find, uh, make a huge effort to, uh, dig into it, I can't, cannot find any piece of information about them, how can they communicate effectively with the Asian community? How do they communicate with the community so that they can collect the concerns and feedbacks from the community? Ten years is where, ten years ago is very different from now, so that, uh, uh, if they cannot find a effective way or the community member cannot find an effective way to, 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 to reach them, how can they get the, the feedback and concern from the community? And I also doubt, like, what did they, uh, what had they done to convey, uh, the, the concerns from the community to the Calgary Police? So I, I, I couldn't help just doubt the way and effective, uh, effectiveness they done, they had done their job in, in, in this way. So the conclusion will probably be, uh, the executive of Calgary Police is doing an awesome job and navigating through a very, uh, visional uh, direction that will, uh, they will, uh, we're promising in achieving, uh, uh, stronger and better policing. But I also, uh, want to raise that the great improvement need to be done to, uh, enhance the, the operation level, uh, officers', uh, ability to catch up with the, with the great vision of the executives. Uh, yes, I think, uh, yeah, that's, uh, my, my, my part of time, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Su, that's, um, uh, a very balanced and, and, um, very useful and informative report, so. Um, unless there's a particular comment or conversation, we will take this information. Thank you very much for sharing it with us, and I, I very much appreciate the energy and effort you've put forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Chair. Uh, our next speaker is, uh, Jocelyn Keith Asante, and apologies if I mispronounced the name, please correct me. Uh, she's from the Calgary Alliance for the Common Good and has a question on the hiring of Indigenous Relations Officers.
No, that was fine. My, you pronounced my name quite fine. Thank you very much. Can you hear me? Yes, please. Can you hear me? Yes. Sorry, this is new tech for me. I'm using my iPad today. Considering the disagreement between the CPS and the Calgary Police Commission regarding the removal of the thin blue line patches from CPS uniforms, the Calgary Alliance for the Common Goods Truth and Reconciliation Research Action Team sees a parallel between thin blue line patch removal from uniforms and the hiring of Indigenous liaison officers. The order from the Commission to have CPS officers remove the TBL patches from their uniforms based on the changed meaning of TBL in the public mind reflected in a Commission survey was responded to with no from CPS officers who feel entitled enough to not fall in line with the command structure. The chief postponed the order for two weeks citing Discord. When asked about improving communication with Commission stated, "The relationships of trust aren't there right now to go down that road." Solutions include improving communication between CPS and its commission using CPS and City of Calgary anti-racism professionals who are adept at filling gaps in anti-racism capacity and building trust through communication. This situation is similar to CACG asking CPS to hire an Indigenous liaison officer for each of its districts. The CPS responded yes, however, now the answer is not yet. Why? Because the CPS isn't ready. The CPS have done exemplary work assembling anti-racism committee, elder circle, Indigenous training for all CPS members and more. And yet the CPS is not ready. Could the CPS and City of Calgary anti-racism professionals work with CPS officers to the point of being ready? And when? Thank you.
Thank you very much for that question. Um, I don't know if there's anyone from CPS who would like to briefly reply. I think that the reply from the Commission is this is um, something that is certainly, um, we are aware of and, uh, continues to be something that we work with CPS on.
I just quickly wanted to acknowledge, uh, the submission there. I think it's a good submission. Um, as, as you know, of this. I think that the issue that, uh, is it's not a, it's not a hard no, it just has, as has been explained, it comes down to staffing and, uh, budget. So we'll continue to, uh, work with the community in putting the CAC on this set. But appreciate the perspective. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the, uh, the question and the observations. It's, uh, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, um, moving on Chair, the next speaker is Ruth Melchior. She has a question, uh, relating to crime in downtown Calgary. Please go ahead.
Thank you. On March eighteenth, I arrived early for a seven AM physio appointment and saw Vanessa Lattisour dying in the lobby of Palos Rais Square. I watched emergency workers desperately try to save her life. When I returned to my car and saw the blood on the sidewalk, I realized how close I had been to witnessing or being another victim of this attack. I'm here to talk about the important role of CPS as a Calgarian and a woman whose daily life has been impacted by this violence. I recognize that random crime is rare. Unfortunately, crimes against women are not. Calgary is a pretty safe city. Downtown is increasingly not. I can't imagine how hard it must be to police our inner-city addiction, mental health crises, and housing insecurity all contribute to crime. I believe the solutions must involve multiple agencies and governments working together with the police. The late Archbishop Desmond Tutu said, "There comes a point where we need to stop just pulling people out of the river. We need to go upstream and find out why they're falling in." Currently, the police pull people out of the river. It's up to society and government to implement safety nets that keep them away from the water. The twenty-twenty-two CPS budget increase percent is equal to our anticipated population growth. I don't believe that this is enough, given the challenges we're facing in our city. I've heard you referencing earlier the November engagement survey results with a response rate of forty-four percent, down sixteen percent in two years. A majority of your employees didn't participate. This tells me, tells me that people don't think anything will change, so are not providing feedback. As you know, ninety percent disagree that CPS is adequately staffed. Eighty-two percent disagree that morale is good. The challenges ranking shows a majority feel there are not enough employees to do the work, and the top concerns include negative perceptions from citizens and not feeling valued. So my questions are as followed: What is being done to improve morale and incentivize patrol? Is there a plan that will be shared publicly to address the increase in violent attacks and crime in the downtown core? I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for those questions. Um, they're very large questions. I think, um, you heard today is some of the work that's, um, going on, um, as, as we speak. Um, I will ask if there's others who will, uh, respond to this. Uh, the year ahead will be a very close look at how the CPS is funded. Um, and, uh, we'll be working with the city to understand what that looks like. Um, are there any other brief comments to add to that?
Uh, thanks, and thanks for the comments. I can't imagine the impact of this crime on so many, and obviously including you, when we talk about the specific crime that you spoke to. Uh, you know, you talked about how difficult violent crime is to police in the downtown, and I think it becomes increasingly more difficult when we talk about crimes like this. I can just assure you that obviously, and I think definitely to have referred to it, the one district and, and obviously the, uh, the broader police service in terms of the task forces and things like that that we refer to, um, around disorder and violent crime in District One are certainly all well-engaged. We certainly look at the, uh, the incident that you're talking about, to see what, please. We certainly look at the incident that you're talking about there to, uh, try to, uh, see what we, what we can learn from that particular incident and also what we can learn about trends that are occurring, uh, in the downtown core. Certainly take those comments, uh, from you, and certainly appreciate you taking the time to share them with us. And it's something we continue, I continue to work on as, as one of the very highest priorities. So thank you so much for, uh, for tuning in and sharing that.
Thank you very much, and I, I can only imagine how traumatic, and I appreciate the letter that you had sent earlier, so I'm very much appreciated and, uh, know that it's certainly something that we continue to focus on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Chair. Our next, uh, speaker is Ms. Taylor McNally, and she has a question related to police brutality. Go ahead, please Ms. McNally.
Hello. Hmm, uh, first off, y'all are exhausting. Uh, and you know this. Uh, coincidentally, the same day you announced that you're monitoring social media accounts who share anti-police contact was the same day my Twitter account was suspended. Now let's not pretend that I am a huge target of the force right now. You mentioned a change happened in the Beltline protests that required an injunction. And yeah, two black women showed up to shut the road down and stop white supremacists from marching for the first time in two years. The weekend after, we had twenty-two police officers alone monitoring us and following us. I would love to know how much it costs taxpayers to police black women in this city. Silencing and extreme policing of those who happen to be vocal activists against police misconduct and brutality is not a good look. And I think this move will backfire severely for you, and I hope you're ready for the consequences as the general public becomes more and more aware of how dangerous the Calgary Police Service truly is. It's like you forget who actually pays you, and it's us, the public. Yet it seems it's easier to get a suspension for calling out harm by police than it is for an officer to be suspended after killing someone. This weekend is the funeral service for Lejor Twel. His body was supposed to be going back home to Africa, and I'm not sure if you're aware, but how his body was brought in after being shot and left in the street for six hours, that is no longer a possibility. What is happening with the officers who murdered him? The public has received nothing other than a performative false sympathy statement, wh- which was not even approved by immediate family members. Are those officers on leave? Are they receiving de-escalation training? Hell, are they even receiving personal support themselves, because I cannot imagine life being the same after murdering somebody in the street. I also want an update on Alex Dunn. The last thing we heard was that this case was coming to a conclusion last year, and it's been crickets ever since myself and a trans individual were assaulted by an off-duty sheriff on the steps of the Calgary Court Centre while protesting against his action. There was also a recent video of a police officer choking out an unhoused Indigenous man in Olympic Plaza. What is happening to him? I truly don't know how you get off by suggesting the Calgary Police Service is attempting to do better and be anti-racist when all those things continue to happen. You haven't even released a statement sharing the fact that you picked off one of the only black people you had left on the Police Anti-Racism Committee. It's kind of a big deal and something that we should be talked about, talking about. I don't know if maybe you want to elaborate on that. The only anti-racism work that you are engaging in is by partnering with individuals in marginalized communities who are okay with accepting crumbs while not actually listening to the communities they are a part of. For example, the partnership with Action Dignity. I could be here for hours asking for details and accountability on overwhelming numbers or matters where you continue to fail the city and its community members, but we obviously don't have time for that, nor would we receive answers as you consistently ignore the questions. But you cannot ignore the public outrage asking you for accountability forever. We want answers, we want change, and we want to be free from the harm you continue to cause. In terms of true community safety, there's a large group of individuals I'm a part of, such as through Bear Clan Patrol, who have now taken upon ourselves to patrol the streets and be on-call twenty-four-seven as an alternative, uh, crisis response or an alternative to police. Thankfully, people are using our number. We're responding to situations such as individuals in mental health crisis, assaults, violence, domestic violence, all forms of harm reduction, and people are receiving the, receiving the, the support they require without slideshows, without social media campaigns, without dogs, without guns, without four-hundred-and-fifty million dollars to do it. In fact, we're all volunteers who simply give a shit about people. You could learn a thing or two from grassroots groups out here doing the work instead of criminalizing us.
Thank you, Ms. McNally. I, I appreciate your comments and the statements you've made. Um, and we, uh, appreciate the time that you've taken to be here today. Um, we have quite a number of other people who also need to speak, so I appreciate your comments.
So you're just going to cut me off and silence me again is what's happening. Thanks so much.
Okay Chair, we are moving on to the next speaker, who is Ms. Alicia Jordan. She has a question related to defiance of authority, uh, as well as the Citizen Satisfaction Survey.
Hello, I will try to be succinct here. Uh, so I have here a quote from the Union Leader of the Calgary Police Senior Officers Association on a social media comment in which he stated, "Police officers don't have the option of only enforcing laws they agree with." If that were the case, our policing system would break down pretty quickly, and I have to say, I agree with him. It is an interesting thing that we have here, a situation in which those tasked with enforcing the rules of authority are now in fact in open defiance of such rules. And that, in response to their defiance, these individuals have been afforded by Chief Newfield the privilege of two entire weeks in which they might consider whether they would want to follow the rules set down by the authority. I find it interesting that our police chief justified this decision based on the idea that these defiant individuals who are currently working in service are, and I quote, "not disruptor types." I wonder, when the police are dealing with someone who is defiant to their authority, do they consider first whether the person is not a disruptor type before they make a decision on whether to enforce the law? I simply ask because it does bring to mind the recent cases of youth in this city who were arrested or detained quite violently for defiance of police authority. For example, the twenty-one-year-old youth arrested at a hockey rink, the teenage autistic girl violently put on the ground at a skating park, and the innocent child run down at a playground for simply being in the wrong place at the wrong time. It's a shame these youth were not given the same privilege as these defiant Calgary officers in being allowed two weeks of time in which to consider and choose whether they want to voluntarily comply with the commands of the police authority. I do wonder what lesson would be learned by these defiant police officers if they were treated in the same way as so many other citizens in this city are. So my question to you, Chief Newfeld, is, how can we ask our youth, the youth of this city, not to be openly defiant to authority, such as police authority, when it is the police themselves who are currently role-modeling defiance to authority? And what message are we sending to youth when we seemingly give some individuals in this city greater allowances and privileges in regards to following rules set down by authority? Now on to my second question, which is for the CPC. A survey conducted by the CPC and the CPS should accurately reflect the opinion of all Calgarians in this city. Yet neither myself nor any other young Calgaryan I know can ever recall being contacted for a survey about policing in this city. So I wonder if the Chair could answer a question on what the CPC is doing to ensure that all demographics, especially that of younger Calgarians, are being equally represented in such surveys.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan, for your questions. I think the first one is almost more of a statement than a question. And the second question that you asked about citizen survey, we work closely with Illumina, who is a professional research firm, and we spend a great deal of time and effort each year looking at how we get sufficient representation from all the demographics in the city for our surveys. So that's an ongoing effort that we make every year and will continue to do that this year as well.
Okay, thank you, Chair. The next speaker who's registered is Mr. Dominic Shaw, and he has a question related to in line. Mr. Shaw, we'll give you permission to speak here in just a second. There we go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, and thank you. This is a bit different for me, as I'm used to speaking with persons with disabilities, if I have one myself. But I'm happy to be here today to be speaking to leaders of the city. Racism was introduced to me into my life even before I was born. As being a baby of a white Scottish mother and a black father in England, the choice to put me up for adoption was already made before I even took my first breath. I spent two years in an orphanage before being adopted and brought to Canada, where it's raised up in northern B.C. My parents were teachers on an Aboriginal reservation, and my understanding of racism that was taught to me was simply it was black slavery. When I turned fifteen, I realized there was something really wrong at home and moved from Whitehorse to sorry, Whitehorse to Toronto. After years of brutal mental and physical abuse, I got an opportunity working at the Hilton Hotel for a black man named Dorian. He was like a father to me. He gave me my first car. He talked about my years of abuse with me. He let me volunteer on the weekends and help the cooks as I was a dishwasher, and that's what I loved doing, cooking. One day, I was called into the manager's office, and they offered to literally send me to cooking school. Sadly, a few days, a few years later, my brother that was also adopted passed away, and I came out west to live with my sister to be closer. I tried to find work, but for the life of me, I couldn't. I had papers, I had experience, I didn't know what I was doing wrong. So I took a step down and applied for jobs as a dishwasher. I got jobs now. A week later, I'd be cooking at the dishwasher's wage, though. This was a pattern for a couple of years. I met some friends and I moved out to Calgary and worked with them at a sawmill, which was pretty diverse, not a lot of problems. I mean, the only real problem about racism in my life was if you go to the bar with Dom, it's always fight night. Ten years ago, I had a stroke, which left me in the need of using a wheelchair to get around. Those bar nights, those bar fight nights went to, don't be downtown alone, don't be traveling the sea train at night. Normally, random assaults on me, sucker punches and slurs are about five, six a year. This year, I stopped going downtown in February because they were already up to three. These weren't provoked, and I definitely know that it was my color of my skin because the N-word went along with them. My mother always said, "You're gonna end up in prison." These days, I kind of feel like it because I just don't leave my community anymore. When I see a symbol of hate, like a swastika, it brings back a lot of these memories that I just talked about. That symbol has changed from its original intention. The thin blue line symbol was originally created by the Scottish in the eighteen hundreds. That symbol has changed as well. What should be used as a symbol of respect for those that have died in the line of duty is now being used for hate. I've had many conversations with law enforcement about the symbol, and sometimes these professionals point out to the profession patch and say, "Sir, this is what you hate. This could not be further from the truth." It's very hard for me to describe the feeling that it leaves me. The closest that I can come is remembering when my mother, I'm not sure why, punished me at age twelve, making me stand outside completely naked for an hour in front of my friends, in front of the whole town. I think the word I'm looking for is worthless. My mother never knew who I would become, and the people that say this to me, they don't know who I am because I've been judged. There's one leader in this room that can really start to change the culture of hate because hate breeds hate in this city. So my question is simple. Not that I dare ask why, that's frankly too scary for me. But the question is simply, will you change today to a symbol that has pure intention of respect, without any outside noise, without any outside interference from other causes that to those that have fallen to a symbol that you can respect? This is for you, Chief. To a symbol that everybody in the room can respect, that everybody in Calgary can respect, and you know what, people like me can respect. And because I haven't had the privilege, with the remaining time, I'm just gonna stay quiet and respect those as I don't get that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shaw. I can't imagine the life that you've been through. And I very much appreciate your coming to talk with us today. I think that rather than try and answer that question at this moment, we should just listen and reflect on what you've said and take that on. And thank you again for your information, your presentation, and your sharing your story. There will be more to come on the Thin Blue Line discussion, and your views will be very valuable. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. The next speaker who's registered is Mr. Michael Bates, and he wants to do a presentation on the Thin Blue Line.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm here on behalf of the Criminal Defense Lawyers Association in Calgary to address the rule of law and the remarkable harm to public trust that occurs when sworn Calgary police officers via their police association openly declare they will not comply with the law when it does not suit them. I hope that Chief Newfeld and the executives and any officers who hear these remarks understand that our members are citizens, husbands, wives, parents, children, extended family and friends of countless ordinary Calgarians, most of whom are not employed in the justice system. Every day, we speak up on behalf of many thousands of individuals who do not have an effective voice to hold the people in this virtual room to account. The Calgary Police Service and its members and association representatives are not above the law, full stop. The Police Act compels all police officers to obey the directions of the Commission. It is not optional. We are not engaging in debate of the true meaning of the Thin Blue Line. We do not seek to lessen it for any officer who considers it to be a personal source of honor. It is undeniable, though, the patch currently creates unnecessary division and conflict in our society. We are living it right now. That said, the rule of law is non-negotiable, and once the Commission issued a direction, what is happening today has nothing to do with the historical meaning of a symbol on a patch. Any CPS officer who today approaches a citizen with a thin blue line patch affixed to their uniform risks communicating directly to that citizen that he or she disrespects the law, holds themselves above it, and will place their personal beliefs ahead of respect for the justice system. In the Chief's prepared remarks to the public yesterday attempting to explain issues connected to the Thin Blue Line patch, he cited inspiration from a book published in around the year two thousand by cyclist Lance Armstrong. But in around two thousand thirteen, Lance Armstrong, after already being caught by regulators, publicly admitted he was a systematic cheater and liar and that he paid no regard to the rules he was obligated to follow. Lance himself said, quote, "I was a bully in the sense I tried to control the narrative, and if I didn't like what someone said, I tried to control that." Said, "That's a lie. They're liars," end quote. By his own admission, Lance cheated, created a false image of being a hero, then tried to cover up his wrongdoing with lies and bullied people who tried to hold him to account. Of all the public figures in the world who could have been referenced to help explain the viewpoint of the Calgary Police Service, the choice of Lance Armstrong is hard to comprehend. In our view, any officer who defies the people of this province as represented by the legislature and the Commission and who betrays their oath to uphold the law, including the Police Act, brings greater disrepute to the honor of their profession than any activist, critic, or criminal defense lawyer's words ever could. We need the Calgary Police Service, but we need them to understand you only have authority if we choose to continue to let you have it. Society's respect and willingness to support police will not withstand lawless defiance of your civilian bosses. Two days of open violation of the law by sworn officers is too long. Two weeks is unfathomable. In twenty eighteen, the Law Enforcement Review Board said of the Calgary Police Service in the Arkansas Inquiry Report, quote, "A police service simply should not ignore the legislature's direction by, in effect, creating its own local law. The authority of a chief to command the police service is important, but the law of the province must be respected." It is a Velcro patch. It can be removed in seconds. It can still be ordered, taken off today. We implore all officers, uphold your oath and demand the same of those you lead. And by doing so, you will all genuinely earn and deserve to keep the public's respect on this issue and more broadly. And finally, to the members of the Commission, do not back down to lawlessness. In our city, you as individuals are the front line of defense when police officers go rogue. Stand up to them. You are right to do so. You represent the rule of law. Police officers shall obey your directions. That is what our constitutional democracy demands. Madam Chair, Chief Newfeld and all present, we thank you for the opportunity to be heard on this important matter.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. I appreciate those comments. I would like to do something slightly out of the ordinary. We were working at trying to manage time. Mr. Shaw's question about an alternative to the patch. I wonder, Chief, if you had a word or two that you would make in response to that question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Certainly. I think that's been raised a number of times, and it is very interesting proposition. It certainly was something that came up during our engagement there with our diversity advisory boards as well as a possibility. One of the big challenges when it first came up, of course, was it was during COVID, and we had a difficult time meeting as it is. I think, you know, Mr. Shaw made a good point about finding a symbol that actually would sort of appeal or be something everybody could honor. And then, of course, the references we've heard about divisiveness right now. One of the things we felt is it would be very difficult probably to find that, especially, you know, in the short term in a COVID environment. But certainly, I think it's something that was an interesting interesting proposition then as it is now, and something that we certainly think is a good idea. And it will be something that I would imagine there will be further discussions around with the union stakeholders as well. So certainly something to look at.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Dr. Oldham, are there any other people on the docket?
Yes, the next speaker we have is President John Orr of the Calgary Police Association. He would also like to provide a presentation on the Thin Blue Line.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Orr. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to speak. As has been much discussed in the past week, the Thin Blue Line is a very important symbol to the over two thousand Calgary police members that the CPA represents. First and foremost, it represents a symbol of remembrance for our members who have fallen in the line of duty. It recognizes their ultimate sacrifice and service to their community and ensures we will never forget them. This is very raw for the members in Calgary, having recently experienced the murder of one of our own. To have some leaders publicly call it a known hate symbol is devastating to our members and their morale. The Thin Blue Line is also a symbol of support for one another. Police officers see and deal with traumatic events throughout their entire careers, from attending fatal motor vehicle collisions to investigating horrific crimes against children and the most vulnerable in our city, to notifying family members of the death of a loved one. We are the ones who respond. This takes a toll on the physical and mental health of officers, both in the short and long term. We've seen this manifest in an ever-increasing number of officers suffering from occupational stress injuries. This symbol signifies that we will be there for one another when we are going through difficult times and that we understand what it means to be a police officer. It also represents our commitment to the community we serve. It is not an us-versus-them division that some have portrayed it as. It signifies that we will be there to serve our citizens, often on the worst day of their lives, and will protect them from those who intend to cause them harm. When we made the decision to encourage our members to continue to wear this important symbol despite the order from the CPC, we did not do so lightly. Our members are loyal to the service they work for, and most importantly, to the citizens they are sworn to serve. They take these duties seriously and demonstrate their commitment to citizens on a daily basis. To disregard a direction from a superior officer is an extremely rare and uncomfortable step to take, but it's one our members felt they needed to do to take a stand in this case. You specifically mentioned our senior officers being supportive of wearing the Thin Blue Line, and I think that speaks to how important this issue is to all police officers. The members I represent are used to being under attack. They face abuse in the course of their jobs on a daily basis, and they deal with it professionally. It's part of the job. However, when unfounded, politically motivated attacks come at our officers and our profession from leaders in their community, it is too much. I spoke about some of these issues at the last Commission meeting and do not see the value in rehashing them now. I want to assure the Commission, as well as the citizens of Calgary, that our officers will continue to be unwavering in their commitment to keeping Calgary a safe community and to providing them with the outstanding service that they expect and they deserve. The wearing of a patch has not and will not change that commitment in any way. I will agree that the Thin Blue Line issue is directly connected to a much larger issue, larger issues which need to be addressed. I will close by saying that as long as we have a voice, we remain open to respectful dialogue and collaboration with all stakeholders on how to overcome this specific issue as well as the larger underlying issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for that presentation.
Chair, that concludes our public portion.
Thank you very much, and I would like to thank everyone for joining us today and for those thoughtful comments and discussion and questions. I would like now to adjourn the public portion of this month's Commission meeting. Thank you to everyone for coming today. Calgary Police Service members and members of the public can now leave the meeting. Commissioners may choose to take a break if they wish. The Chief and I will stay on to take questions from the media. Commissioners and presenters for the in-camera portion of the meeting are asked to sign in using the meetings link in about fifteen minutes and will likely send an email to confirm that. So thank you very much, and Corwin, can you please queue up the reporters now?
Absolutely, and I'll just start by flagging the Chief. There's been some feedback that we're unable to hear you as clearly as needed, so if you can move the mic a little bit closer, speak up. That would be appreciated by the folks in the media. I'm going to start with those who registered, so Adam McVicker from Global. We will queue you up to speak.
Hi there. My first question is for the Commission Chair. I was wondering about the timing of this decision to bring down this order from the Police Commission. Why at this point, given your comments earlier about just how much is going on with the police service at this time?
Thank you, Adam. The decision was made quite a number of months before. We've been working on this issue for upwards of a year, and the work through the fall was looking at determining what we needed to do. There'd been a number of conversations about when and how we should go forward. There'd been a number of conversations about when and how we should go forward and? The decision was made that at the end of, of all the consultation, it was, it was time to make a decision and move forward.
Adam, do you have any follow ups?
Yeah, I was wondering if I could ask the chief just really quickly. You know, it was mentioned yesterday, perhaps a bit of erosion of trust between the service and the, the police commission, I guess. How does that impact morale on officers and how does that impact policing on the ground?
Excellent. Well, I think the morality officers is well known right now. I think the front line of anything has been very difficult. And policing on the ground has been very difficult for the reasons we've talked about as well. So I, I think that's certainly a challenge. I think the good news is though. What I've been able to decipher thus far is that, you know, this is, this has turned into a significant conflict for sure. But everybody is willing to come to the table to, to, to identify the issues and work through them. So I think. I think we're starting from a very good place here and I'm optimistic that we'll be able to resolve the issues there. Working, working collaboratively.
Thank you. We will move on to Joe Harwood from CPC. I've unmuted a few of you, but I'll still call on you one on one. Go ahead, Joe.
Hi there. I'm, I'm just wondering, what did the next two weeks sort of look like in terms of that compromise and what options are on the table? Sort of what, what's each side coming to the table with?
I'll look to the chief to respond to that.
Well, thank you, Joe. Yeah, the conversations, I think that I've had, I've had individual conversations with sort of everybody involved in this. And as I say, that's why I'm comfortable saying that there's very optimistic around the? Level of commitment towards identifying the issues and then being able to sort of bring them forward. The, I, I don't actually have the full list of issues just yet, just because of timing and the ability to sort of gather those. And then it'll be about being able to schedule some time? To be able to come together to sort of prioritize what those issues are? And then kind of work through them. And so I think it's kind of an iterative approach in terms of what the next week looks like. That's sort of filling out sort of day by day. So thanks for the question.
Do you have any follow up question?
Um, I do. And thanks for that, Chief. Just how many officers actually wear the patch if you, if you happen to know? And does that include members in every unit? Just thinking of the CPS presentation on de-escalation that we saw earlier? And how allowing the patch might impact those particular efforts?
Yeah, it's hard to know. Of course, we have a number of different work sites right across the city, which, as you know, has a large footprint. So there, I mean, there's no question that there's a lot more police officers that are wearing it now than what there was. But I can also tell you it's a, it's challenging issue internally as well because there are officers that, that don't wear it. And so that's one of the messages that we're sending to our folks as well is that? Making sure that there's respect for one another, differing opinions on this because there, as, as there is in everything, there is differing opinions. So as we work through the issues in the process, do not just making sure that, you know, the folks are, are supporting one another? And recognizing that there are different opinions and all should be respected.
Thanks very much.
Excellent. Thank you. We will now go to Tyson Fedora from CTV. Go ahead, Tyson.
Thanks. This question is for the chief. You mentioned yesterday, of course, that many of your members were incensed by the comments from Jean-Carlo Caral last week. Of course, a commission member and city councillor. What would you like to see the commission do to maybe stop these remarks? Or have these maybe attacks that you feel are, are going against your members?
Yeah, I can believe that Tyson for discussions with the commission. All, all I can say is certainly when, when we see? Comments like that, we don't think there are actually comments being directed by the commission. But when there's somebody on the commission, it's problematic and sometimes it's inconsistent with what the, what the commission seems to be saying. So I think there's, there's just a piece around the line that they're understanding, you know, what that means. So yeah, so, but yeah, that was, that was a terribly devastating comment, I think, at a very difficult time.
And just a quick follow up for the commission here. Chief Newfeld mentioned yesterday erosion of trust has taken place between the commission and the service. What does the commission plan to do to try and repair that? You mentioned it'll start immediately, but what does that look like?
It, it will start immediately and it'll start with conversations between? The executive of the service and ourselves to try and understand where that, that trust was lost, what might be? Some of the causes of that and then what we can do with, with putting that back together. So those conversations will start actually immediately, including later this evening when we go on camera.
Okay, thank you, Tyson. We will now go to Adam Toy. Please go ahead. Adam from Global.
Yeah, thanks for taking my question. First question for the commission chair. Wondering if you can speak to the decision-making process the commission undergoes and how? Individual opinion, experience, expertise and personal agenda as was intimated may come into that process.
Sorry, just to clarify, is that with respect to any decision or with respect to the thin blue line decision?
Either, both, yeah.
I would say, I mean, our decision-making process is one that's collaborative. There's 12 people around the table. We all come with experience. We were all appointed to commission by city council for our various? Levels and, and parts of expertise based on either experience, education or, or other things that we've done. And so when a particular issue comes up, we look to see what kind of research needs to be done. We seek out input from other stakeholders. It's very much like any other decision-making process that goes on. And then we have full and frank discussions and those carry on as long as we need to be, to the point that we can get to? A consensus on what the decision should be. And it's essentially a collaborative democratic process and, and brings all, all of the opinions? To bear of all of the various members of the commission.
And then a second question that I'd like to hear from both the commission chair and the police chief about? Wondering if there's any concerns that CPS members are monitoring civilian social media profiles? And then seemingly using their reaction to those posts to apparently guide their behavior on the job.
Sorry, I maybe I'll go first just to be clear because I think there was some misunderstanding in the media yesterday. I can confirm that the CPS corporately is not monitoring anybody's social media account. I'm not even sure if I use the word monitoring. I was referring to the fact that people were, oh, somebody's nodding. I didn't use the word monitor. People are, people are paying attention to, I would say, and that's causing issues inside the service. And that relates to sort of people's morale and the trust and confidence that they have in the commission. So that's the issue, but let me be 100% clear. We are not monitoring anybody's account. We've seen that a couple, heard that a couple of times tonight, and that's not the case.
I guess I would say from the commission's perspective, it's, you know, we, we're community citizens as commissioners. And we know that, you know, what you put out there in social media can be read by anyone and? It's not our intent to have those things misused. So we continue to look at what we do and how we do it. And I know that certainly over the next number of weeks, we'll be looking at our, our communication? Policies, how we manage this and, and if we need to change things as we go forward.
Okay, thank you, Adam. We will now move on to Dylan Short from Post Media and then we'll circle back if there are any other follow ups.
Thanks. This question is for the chair there. You mentioned off the top, a number of other cities have sort of made similar? Directives towards their officers not being allowed to, to wear thin blue line patches. I do know that there are several police services that essentially just said, you know, if it's not on the uniform, you're not allowed to wear it. So they don't particularly say thin blue line, but they just say nothing that's not standard issue is not allowed on the uniform. Did you look at sort of a more, I guess, not so specific order or directive? Was that ever discussed?
Yes, it was discussed. Our intent was to deal with the thin blue line based on the? Parts of our community that are uncomfortable with that being displayed. And we wanted to work with that first, hoping that we could come to commitment, understanding, awareness? About the negative implications of the patch for the community. It means very different things to different people. Certainly within the service, there are many people who see this as a positive symbol. Others don't, and I think that we have to remember that the issue with this particular symbol is the fact that there are such different percent, per perceptions? And perspectives on what it means. And so? We, you know, our intention is to look at this first. If we have to take other steps later, then that might be a consideration. But at this point, we're just hoping that we can through communication and awareness and education and, and consensus come up with, with a way forward.
Thanks. And then my other question. Sorry, my other question, I guess this is to either one of you. I guess obviously we heard from a few people today that, that there's concerns amongst the public of the, you know, the open defiance that we've seen. I've heard, I've heard from a lot of other people that, that didn't speak today as well, that say that the, this is obviously an issue as well. People are saying, you know, if I openly defy, you know, orders from my boss publicly, that, that there would be, I wouldn't get a two week grace period. So I guess just, I was hoping both of you could address just, you know, that, that concern, that, that level of worry. I, I'm guessing it is obviously very different for the two of you, but hoping to get both your thoughts on that.
Chief, I wonder if you want to address that first and I can add comments.
Okay, sure. Maybe we'll do rock, paper, scissors. Sorry, do you mind just? My mind was going there. Do you mind just summarizing the question one more time?
For, for sure. There, there's just been a lot of comments, obviously today, and I've heard from outside the meeting as well, that, that? People are quite worried that, you know, the, the civilian oversight body is essentially, you know? Being told no by the officers and people are really concerned that, that, you know, this sort of may lead to issues around like? Can we police the police, I guess, for a lack of better term?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. So I was really trying to be very clear yesterday. And I, I did it right off the, the hop there to say, we understand this is a lawful direction from the commission. I understand that. I don't, I don't know if we understand. I can tell you that I understand. And that I have a responsibility to carry it out and I will do so. I made the point, we're not ungovernable. That's not the point. As I talk to officers and I talk to union leaders here, that, that's not what's happening here. So I wanted to reassure Calgaryans that that's not the case. You know, the issue is, as we begin to, to, to assess the reaction that came as a result of the decision? We simply needed some time to figure out what, what exactly happened here? And what is a symptom and what is a root cause? And that's really all we're doing. The two week grace period was really, I would say, to allow for a bit of a cooling off period? To allow for time to assess what exactly is driving this very significant response, very significant decision that's been made by both unions? And then allow for sort of correct collaborative problem solving? To occur and for, for solutions to emerge. And I'm, I'm confident that's going to happen. So? Calgaryans shouldn't be concerned that the Calgary Police Service is trying to be above the law. That is not what's happening here.
And I will add to that, that the, the commission has made a decision? That's within their right to do so. And at the same time, the actual? Implementation of that decision? Is essentially up to the chief and his executive. And so we need to make sure that there's time for that to be managed by him and the executive. It doesn't mean that we are in any way considering that this was not the right decision to make. It was. And so in our role as governance of the service, that's our, our role is in including the, the piece of the police act. However, the operational part in terms of implementing that is up to the chief? And we will stay in touch and make sure that? If there's other things that need to be done, we can look at that. But at this point, we believe that, that he's capable very much of doing that.
Okay, thank you, Dylan. Adam, I see your hand is still up. Adam Toy, is that an old hand or do you have another question?
Yeah, I had one more question for the police chief just around the thin blue line as a symbol. We've heard a lot from a variety of people, variety of officers, and we heard the police association today talking about the meeting. You even yesterday talking about the meaning of the symbol. However, there has been documented? Understand, a, a association of that symbol with? With other groups that are white supremacist groups, et cetera, seen as, as, as a hateful symbol. Not the least of which mentioned by a commissioner. I'm just wondering if, if, if in your conversations with your members? If anybody has acknowledged that the meaning of the thin blue line symbol has maybe? Migrated a little bit, or even if it, if, if they recognize that it has association with hateful groups? I'm thinking it's, it was carried, you know, in the, in the Charlottesville rally in 2017. Wondering if, if, if you've heard any of that from your members?
Yeah, we have for sure. I can tell you that the members are well aware, like they're, they're very bright and they know what's going on. They do separate, you know, the, the, try to separate, take a step away from U S policing in the context there. There's been some things that have happened in the U S that really, I think, I think we'd all like to believe that we're different. And in the policing system here in Canada is, is much different than it is in the, in the U S. And so some of the things that happened there, I think, I think some of the members have a hard time accepting that that should transfer directly onto, onto them. You know, but when we talk about a commercially available symbol, you know, there is a risk that, that certainly anybody can get it? And anybody can use it however they want to. So? Even though I don't think we've seen a proliferation of it here. I do think we've seen American flags or blue lines that they back on. So there's risk around that for sure. I think what our folks are saying though is that when they're working close with the community, and we work close with the community? And they have conversations with the community and the community has interactions with the police and there's relationships there. There, the, the communities, they don't find that to be a substantive issue. And that's what the officers are hearing. That's one thing they're having a difficult time reconciling. And I think it's, it basically comes down to relationships. If you move forward and you're, and you learn more and understand about one another, you tend not to be? As concerned about these types of things. You learn more and you trust the person. I think as we go forward in a diverse city, I think it's to all of us. I think there's, there's people that are trying to? Use what makes us different to divide us instead of allowing folks to come together and learn more and, and try to unite around what makes us different. And I think I'm hearing that from the members as well, is that, is that they just think that the attacks keep coming and now today it's this? And then what's next, right? And then what's after that? And if they're going to have to stand up somewhere, then why not now? So that's what I'm hearing.
Thank you. Dylan, I see your hand is still up as well. Is that another question or an old hand?
Uh, just one more question. This is for the chief. We've heard obviously that there are a lot of different ways to view the thin blue line symbol. I was just curious. How do you view the symbol?
You know, it's been around for all 30 years of my career, Dylan, and it's always been positive. I, I haven't, I haven't had a negative? Sort of connotation of it. This is all sort of has accelerated very quickly over the last couple of years. And so here we are. Personally, I do understand because I do engage with the community a lot. And so I've certainly heard both sides of this as well. So I'm all aware, but yes, for 30 years during my career, it's been a very positive symbol that, that is honorable and it has deep meaning to folks for sure.
Excellent. Thank you. I think we are going to end it there in the interest of time. So Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for the questions and the conversation and thank you all to, also to the service.